This evening, we will go back into regular session. We had a earlier closed session to discuss some legal matters, but at this point in time, we will call our regular meeting to order. And we always like to begin with our pledge of allegiance, so we'll ask our vice commander to come forward to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And at this time, we'll ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection. You can use this time to prepare for the meeting, for silent prayer, or to reflect as we go into our work for the evening. Okay, thank you all very much. Counsel, you all have minutes from the September 8th meeting. It is the regular meeting, but we also have notes from the work session that are included with the school board that we had prior to the meeting. Counsel, do you all have any changes to make to the minutes as they were submitted, or do we have a motion to approve as submitted? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, we are going to open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. Now, I know a number of people are here to speak on our public hearings. There will be a time during those meetings, those sessions, for you to come speak as well. So you're certainly welcome to use your three minutes to say whatever you'd like to say here at the top of the meeting, but you don't have to say everything you want to say regarding the public hearing until we get to that portion of the meeting, if that makes sense. So you're more than welcome to use your comment time however you choose to, but also you will have an additional time with the public hearing section for those specific areas. So with that, we will go on and open the citizen comment on public matters portion of the meeting. Please come down to our podium, use the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. The floor is now open.
Good evening. My name is Carla Howard. I don't live in Radford anymore, but I do work here. My family was directly impacted by DSS. My granddaughter Lulu was illegally kidnapped by Radford DSS in October 2020. My experience, they forced me to start asking questions. What I found out isn't just about my family, but about the entire city. Tonight, I bring you Radford Gate. Radford is a small city of about 16,000 people. Radford DSS ranks 13th in Virginia for child abuse and neglect investigations. That's around 70 cases every year, far more than you expect for a city this size. This volume is directly tied to the massive legal spending I discovered. From January 2020 to April 2025, DSS has spent over 3,000, 319,700, Jesus Christ, they have spent over 319,073 on outside lawyers. That average is about 5,000 every single month. Let's project that back to 2014 when the scheme began. The total's between 5,000, 500,000 to 700,000, all of it in taxpayer money, the law. Virginia Code 15.2-1542 says the city attorney must represent all city departments, including DSS. Radford City Charter, Article 4, Section 4.6 repeats that rule. Dillon's rule means DSS has no independent authority to hire its outside lawyers, even VDS guidelines require local offices to go to their city or county attorney first. The proof. On April 29th, 2025, Director Vicki Cohen admitted in writing, her words, "Since 2014, our monthly rate has typically been $3,000 to $4,000." Vicki Cohen also claimed there were no concerns with representation, yet used conflict attorneys to funnel money. She also admitted invoices from early 2020 were perched during an active FOIA. The conclusion, put it together, half a million dollars of unauthorized spending, laws ignored, families stripped of due process. This was not a mistake. It was a shadow legal pipeline for 11 years. The Radford DSS has been running an illegal kidnapping ring under the color of law. The city attorney let it happen, the council looked the other way, the courts allowed it, everyone swore an oath to the law, and everyone ignored it. So tonight, I ask, on the record, what will you do now that you can't deny the truth anymore? Also, where are the children that was illegally kidnapped from DSS?
I will ask you to please conclude your comments. Are there any other citizens who have comments for the public record?
Hello, my name is Bill Fleischer. I have a concern and a question tonight. For the past several years, I've noticed that Radford's becoming a magnet for low income and homelessness. We have, as compared to neighboring communities, a disproportionate amount of Section 8 housing. I've been told by some school administrators that over half the students at Radford High School are on some sort of assistance, and this is way out of balance. You have to have in a community enough people that are paying taxes and hopefully given benevolently of both their time and their money in order to support the needs of the lower-income folks. In addition to that, we have a homeless situation that's really becoming a problem. I've heard from people in various neighborhoods where homes that are vacant for a little bit, waiting to be sold, that people are camping out illegally there. And I bless the hearts, the Radford Sheriff's Department cleaned a couple hundred bags of trash. I don't want to lump everybody who's homeless into the same category, but there's a significant portion that have a different mindset, and you could provide all kinds of stuff for them, and they're not going to operate within the law, because I have seen this personally in cities like Austin, Texas, and Portland, Oregon, where the city government didn't do anything to address the issue, and their downtowns were trashed, and they posed a danger to the population and a real problem for the police. Now, you couple that in our community with the fact that we have lost a lot of good-paying industrial jobs, we have an inadequate economic development, and a city budget that's encumbered with debt and stressed already, and that's not a good combination for our future. Now, that's my concern. My question is, we have a number of agencies in town that help, and some of them help with drug detox and other issues. And I'll use premise health across the river as an example. I talked with them on their service, and they provide free transportation to and from Radford for people across the state to come in and to use their program. However, if somebody does not finish the program, and they choose to quit, then they don't provide the transportation back. They end up becoming our problem. So I'd like to ask the question, does the city of Radford, as a municipality, perhaps working with other state agencies, have the ability to require that anybody that's brought here for any kind of assistance like that, that they be required to return from the community from which they came, where they have a better shot of connections, and that they don't become our problem?
Thank you for your question and your comment. We'll come up with a response. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a comment for the public record?
If we need to introduce ourselves, but I'm Matt Hicks. I'm at Ridgeview, and I believe I'll get a chance to speak later regarding the rezoning request at 212 Third Avenue, but I'm very concerned as a residential adjacent property owner. I own two properties there. Thank you very much. Matthew Hicks, property owner, 1400 and 1322 Downey, adjacent to that location.
Does anyone else have a comment on public matters for the record this evening? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Counsel, we do have an opportunity to respond. We need to keep our comments to a minute or less. Regarding Ms. Howard's issues that she brought up, there was a lot that was stated. I don't know that I feel comfortable addressing anything until we have more information regarding that. Mike, is there anything you can share regarding the city attorney's role versus any outside attorneys for social services?
It's not uncommon for a local department of social services to have a different attorney than the city attorney. You know, so in fact, I think that has been the case for the Radford City Department of Social Services as long as I can remember, frankly, at least for the last 20 years. I think maybe 20 years back, the city attorney did serve in that capacity as well, but that's what I can tell you, you know, as to that.
And if there is a concern on behalf of someone who has been through the social services process, is there a process that they can go through to have those concerns addressed?
There are, and those matters would not be addressed to city council. You know, there's a process within the Virginia Department of Social Services, a constituency complaint process, you know, that would handle those types of concerns. I don't frankly know what exactly the social services matter is for this family in particular, but I can say that there are strict confidentiality rules that apply to social services information. I do not feel like that the director of the Radford City Department of Social Services would be in a position really to address those things publicly.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I assumed. I just wondered if there was a process to direct anyone that does have those concerns and how they can go about that. Okay.
And I sit on the Department of Social Services Board, and I will say that, you know, we do get referrals from different community agencies and organizations. Every child has a due process, as does the family, so it's, I know the board that I sit on is made up of concerned citizens, including a parent representative, so it's not just the department leadership that would be making these calls. It's a larger entity, so.
Thank you, Jessie. Thank you, Mike. Anything else regarding that particular issue? Moving forward, Mr. Fleischer, thank you so much for coming to address us. We have been made aware that some folks that have been utilizing services that are not located within the city have struggled with their transportation. I know there've been some conversations. From a legal perspective, I'm not sure we can require an entity that doesn't exist in the city at any rate to do much of anything, because it's not that they're bringing folks into the city of Radford. They may be adjacent Fair Lawn or Montgomery County or somewhere else, and there is the freedom of movement, so they have the ability to come into the city. I don't know that we could require, but I think we could have discussion, and I think there has been some discussion to try to see what we could do to mitigate some of those situations. Several of the things you described, I know that our police has done an absolutely wonderful job trying to connect those who are challenged with their home security with resources and trying to address that. When those situations haven't worked, we've addressed it at a higher level, and some of that has been visible in terms of the cleanup that's had to take place. Homelessness is not a problem that's unique to the city of Radford, unfortunately, and we're doing our best to find best practices across the Commonwealth and across the country to do what we can as a community to deal with that. Counsel, is there anything else anyone would like to say regarding that?
I would like to say something. This was a very big topic brought up by a concerned citizen that's on the joint commission, and so we spent at least an hour talking about it. And we spoke with Officer Height and a few other people had voiced their concerns, and I know that we've seen things on social media and podcasts and the news and things like that, and it's something that we all are very aware of. But I will say that there is a whole different subcommittee that the police department put together, and it's called the HOT team. I forget what the acronym is. I didn't write it down, but I mean, they are, it's on their radar. They're working together with businesses, doing research, you know, making sure that entities that are helping others are being held accountable for their policies and procedures that they have. So it's being researched and it's on our radar, and we are doing everything that we can to ensure that our citizens are safe, that the people that need help get the help that they need. But it's definitely, it's a topic of conversation for every group that we have, and I just want to make sure. And actually, RU has actually gotten involved, and they're going to make it a wicked topic for the students to address and analyze as well. So they're trying to get involved and trying to find solutions as well.
All right. Thank you all very much. Any other comments regarding the citizen comments that were received this evening? Okay, moving forward, we do have several proclamations we want to take a look at. The week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, is Public Power Week. The week is established nationally to recognize our electric employees, the importance of power in building strong communities, the 2,000 community-owned utilities across the country, as well as the significance of reliable power. The proposed proclamation we have this evening recognizes the significance of the week locally, and Jessie, I believe you have that proclamation to present.
I do. Whereas the Radford Electric Department provides our homes, businesses, social service agencies, and local government agencies with the reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible services. And whereas the Radford Electric Department is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service reliability, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the Radford Electric Department is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work by providing reliable power services. And whereas the Radford Electric Department will continue to work to bring safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses. And whereas the employees of the Radford Electric Department are dedicated to providing Radford residents and businesses with reliable electric service, and they prove this by coming out to fix power in all weather conditions. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Radford does hereby proclaim, October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Public Power Week throughout this city, and the theme being powering our community's future, and recognizes the Radford Electric Department for its contributions to the community. Radford City Council encourages customers and employees to learn more about the benefits of public power and all it entails to provide reliable electric service to all customers. City Council and Mayor, I would like to put forth this proclamation for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Come on down. We have our director of the Electric Department here with us this evening to receive the proclamation. Well, it turns out the week of October 5th through October 11th is also nationally recognized as Fire Prevention Week, and we have a proclamation this evening that endorses Fire Prevention Week in Radford, encouraging recognition of this important service by promoting smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, as well as fire safety at home, at work, in our schools, and our forest. Skye, I believe you have the proclamation for us this evening?
Yes, sir. City of Radford Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, the city of Radford is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those who live and visit our city, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas, home fires killed more than 2,840 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to an estimated 343,100 home fires, and whereas, roughly three out of every five deaths happen in homes with either no working smoke alarms or no smoke alarm at all, and whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, Radford residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas, Radford residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month, and whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas, city of Radford first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas, the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium-Ion Batteries In Your Home, works to educate everyone about using batteries safely. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Radford does hereby proclaim, October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Radford, and urges all the people of Radford to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Radford's fire and emergency services. Mayor, I would present this proclamation for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations. And our fire chief is here. Rodney, come on down. Our final proclamation for the evening, the month of October is nationally designated as Arts and Humanities Month. The designation recognizes the importance of the arts in our community, in the economy, quality of life, civic life, tourism, education, and entertainment. The local proclamation recognizes this importance that the arts and humanities have on the city of Radford. Kelly, I believe you have the proclamation for us this evening?
Allergies, awesome. Proclamation, October 2025, National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas, the arts and humanities are the embodiment of all things beautiful and entertaining in the world, an enduring record of human achievement, and whereas, the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life in the city of Radford, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism, exerting a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas, arts education research shows that the arts help to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of beauty and cross-cultural understanding. And whereas, we use the humanities, history, literature, and philosophy to explore what it means to be human. And whereas, the arts and humanities play a unique and intrinsically And whereas, the arts and humanities play a unique and intrinsically valuable role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our state. And whereas, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Council of the City of Radford, Virginia, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Arts and Humanities Month, and does call upon the citizens of Radford to celebrate, explore, and participate in the arts and culture of the city of Radford. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, and I hope everybody celebrates with the arts. We do have several arts events in the month of October, and that includes the Radford Highlanders Festival, which will be coming up October the 11th on the Radford University Campus. So lots of good stuff happening. Okay, Counsel, moving forward, we do have several public hearings this evening. I will say one more time to anyone that's in attendance that would like to speak at any of our public hearings, particularly the rezoning requests, which I know has been a particular interest, to be sure to sign up on the sheet. Is it still out in the?
I could have signed up.
Okay. So if you haven't signed up yet, you can still participate, but come on in so we know who everybody is. We want to make sure we keep track of everything for the record. So at this time, we are taking a look at our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for our Community Development Block Grant Funds. The Virginia Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that we have this report for the City of Radford to be available for public comment. The fiscal year 2024-25 report has been prepared, as required, and illustrates project funding for emerging home repairs, water, sewer, and stormwater improvements, subrecipients, beautification enhancements, homeless intervention programs, as well as economic development enhancement. Total expended during the program year 2024, including prior-year activities, is $263,949.07 in community development block grant funding. And so Melissa, do you have some information you'd like to share with us, or is that everything that we need for tonight?
Everything that you need for the city, yes, sir.
Okay. And I would just like to say, you know, we talked about several of these issues during the citizen comment portion. While it's not a significant amount of money compared to the overall city budget, that $263,000 does help us address some of the homeless issues. It helps some of our private agencies do the work that they do, that help the hungry, the housing insecure, and other issues along the way. And it also addresses some of our economic development activities for the city. So it is areas that does move us forward, and it's just announcement of the plan at this point in time. Do I need to open a public hearing for it, or just make the announcement?
Open the public hearing.
We will open the public hearing at this time, then. If anybody has any question or comment, feel free to come down to the podium. This is just the public hearing on the CDBG plan. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will close the public hearing at 7:39 PM. Moving forward, we do need to have a public hearing for a debt service note for the West Radford Commerce Park. A public hearing is scheduled concerning the proposed issuances of the City of Radford of its general obligation notes. Maximum principal amount of the notes is estimated to be $750,000, and the purpose and proposed use is no more than 10% of the proceeds of the note are expected to be provided in funds to pay costs of development of the West Radford Commerce Park and the issuance of the notes. Now, this is a complicated subject. I'm going to ask Mr. Meredith to give us a little bit of information on it. He may have some additional presentation on what we're doing with this. But Todd, if you could share a little bit about what we're doing at the West Radford Commerce Park, why this $750,000 is appropriate, and how we're going about this process?
Sure. The general obligation note of $750,000 is being used as part of a grant project through VEDP to rehab the West Commerce Park. This is a grant that will supply the city with $3.5 million. The local grant match requirement is 25% of that, or $615,000. So the city puts in $615,000, you get $3.5 million to rehab the site. It's my opinion, this is a generational project for the city. The site will be prepared to hopefully attract in businesses and industry to the site. The $750,000 total on the loan is to cover loan fees, and anything that isn't used can be paid back to the loan as soon as it's eligible.
Do you want to address the transformer that's part of this?
So the $615,000, or $615,000, it will be used for some sort of rehabilitation on the site. It's not just money that goes out. What's currently in the project budget is $615,000 is budgeted for the construction of an electric utility substation. So the idea is $615,000 will be used to put a transformer on the site, which will be the biggest bulk of that expenditure, along with all the peripheral technology that's needed for the substation.
And we had a request from our EDA to move forward with this, to be able to comply with the grant, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Counsel, do you all have any questions or comments regarding the public hearing for the West Radford Commerce Park debt service note? Seeing none, we will officially open the public hearing, see if anyone from the public has any comment or question regarding that. If you do, please come down to the podium, use the microphone, and state your name for the record. Seeing no one coming down, we will close that public hearing at 7:42. And we will move forward to our next public hearing. This is a rezoning request for 212 Third Avenue. New River Community Action Incorporated submitted an application for the rezoning on property known as 212 Third Avenue. Tax map numbers 51129, 51059A, and 51057A. The request to rezone tax map from B3, Central Business District, to R4, multifamily, and tax map 5-1057A is currently zoned R4 multifamily. So with that, I will turn the floor over to Melissa. She has a presentation for us, and I believe she'll be calling up maybe some folks from NRCA.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On July 14th, 2025, I received an application for New River Community Action to rezone a portion of three lots that they owned. The property consists of three lots. Sorry about that. Let's move forward. Maybe. Sorry about that. We'll try that again. There we go. Sorry about that. The property consists of three lots, with one of them already zoned R4. They're requesting to rezone the other two lots to B3, limited business, from B3, limited business, to R4, multifamily, to accommodate permanent supportive housing. The B3 zoning does not allow current multifamily dwellings on the main floor. In April of 2018, a special use permit was approved to allow for apartments on the second floor. So the second floor does currently have two nine-bedroom apartments. So a total of nine bedrooms, two apartments totaling nine bedrooms. Here you'll see just a vicinity map. You'll see highlighted in the black the location of the proposed rezoning. It is on the corner of Third Avenue and Downey. It is, to the north of it, you'll find East Main, and then to the east, you'll see the university, and of course, we have Bisset Park to the far left of this. Here you'll see an aerial that provides both an aerial and the zoning map. What you'll see, as I shared earlier, the request is to rezone from B3 to R4. The map on the left shows the current zoning, the areas that's highlighted in red. Those are the two parcels that are currently zoned, are currently zoned B3, and the area highlighted in green is already zoned R4. So they're trying to get the whole property to conform to the R4. And if you look at the surrounding district, to the north, you have B3; to the west, you have R4; and catty corner, you also have R4; and then to the south, you have R3, single-family The site currently is served by public water, sewer, and electricity, and it does not lie within a flood hazard area. In accordance to Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2204, public hearing sign was placed on the property. Legal ads were ran in Cardinal News. Joining property owners were notified via mail. And then I have, this evening, I did provide both City Council and Planning Commission with three comments that I received via email to Mr. and Mrs. Hicks, as well as Mr. Dunn provided those. So you should have those before you. I'm more than happy to take questions now. We do have a presentation for New River Community Action prior to the public hearing being opened. So with that being said, we can other discuss.
Are there any questions from Melissa, or do we want to ask New River Community Action to come forward, and then we can ask any questions after that? Let's have Community Action. How about that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Casey Edmonds. I am the Housing and Shelter Director from New River Community Action. I'm here with our CEO this evening, Jennifer Smith. We are here to present to you about our project for the 212 Third Avenue.
Those are the lights, we can get on here.
Yes, sir. Is that better? Everybody? All right, good. All right. NRCA requests a rezoning of the first floor of the 212 Third Avenue property regarding tax partials 51129 and 51059A, from B3, Central Business, to R4, multifamily. The second floor is already permitted multifamily through a special use permit. The request is consistent with surrounding zoning and land use, and will provide an additional five units in the region's affordable housing stock. NRCA's 212 Third Avenue project, identified as an adaptive reuse, adapted reuse, will develop 13 units total. Each eight units on the second floor already zoned R4 with the SUP, or with the special use permit, and an additional five units on the ground floor. There will be individual entrances, kitchens, and bath in each unit. There will be shared green space with outdoor patios, and updated landscaping, including our residential laundry facilities and meeting or community room. On-site elevator allows for appropriate ADA accessibility. NRCA is partnering with New River Community Services, or NRVCS, to provide permanent supportive housing with on-site services that are tenant-based and tenant-driven. Services are specific to the individual needs of each resident. The project site is adjacent to the NRCA hub. On Third Avenue, it ensures tenants have access to additional community resources and programs as needed. Transportation is available to the bus stop located directly across the street from the 212. There's no environmental impacts. The building maintains its current size and integrity. Parking lot is in good condition, but it may need resurfacing. Tenants will utilize city utilities, and the current dumpster area will be upgraded to a concrete pad and fencing, locked and secure for the 212 residents only. Surrounding zoning. As mentioned earlier, as you can see, there is R4 already surrounding the property, with the exception of the business area there to the north of the property. And then the other picture there is just showing you the two parcels that we're talking about, or the three parcels that we're requesting right there. All right. Next slide. The elevation shows that there's no additions are intended for the building. NRCA will upgrade the windows, including restoring the original window openings. Exterior will be improved with new paint, updated awnings, and new landscaping. The second floor plans, the second-story floor plan, that's the proposed efficiency and layout of the eight units that's proposed for the second story, or the second story. Yeah. All right. Next slide. What is supportive housing? Supportive housing combines affordable housing with robust, voluntary, and wraparound supportive services that help people who face the most complex challenges to live with stability, autonomy, and dignity. Services such as employment, because people want to work and have purpose. The tenants all have a lease. They have the same rights and responsibilities as any other tenants. PSH is a well-researched, evidence-based practice that is proven to help participants gain access to services and supports needed to maintain their housing. Who does permanent supportive housing help? PSH supports those with the most barriers to housing, such as those who have experienced long-term homelessness, or chronically homeless and living with complex health challenges. It's for those with the extremely low incomes, $23,000, excuse me, and $50 for an individual. These are people with disabilities, and they are people with a history of housing instability. PSH supports those with extremely low incomes. Why supportive housing matters? Cost studies in numerous states and cities found that supportive housing results in tenants' decrease of homeless services, or homeless shelters, hospitals, emergency rooms, jails, and prisons, which reduce public cost. Supportive housing provides better outcomes and is physically responsible. It reduces public expenditures to crisis response. PSH participants maintain an 89% retention rate after the first year. An average PSH tenant's experience 23% fewer hospital stays, 33% fewer emergency room visits. PSH reduces jail bookings by 90% and does so for a third of the cost of incarceration. The national average for incarceration on an individual is $131 per day, versus the $71 per day that you pay for housing people with services. This means it's a 54% more cost, it's 50% more, 54%, excuse me, percent more costly to incarcerate an individual than to provide an individual with housing and with the services they need to maintain that housing. Oh, y'all, excuse me. I'm so sorry. So myth versus fact. Myth: It will hurt property values. And the fact is, that studies show no negative impact, and there's often improvements to the property. Myth: It will make the neighborhood unsafe. The fact is, neighborhoods are safer when folks are housed, and folks have access to the resources that they need to maintain their housing. Myth: It is a shelter. This is not a shelter. It is permanent housing. And it is not treatment. Again, it is housing for people who need services. These folks will have a lease, and they will have the same rights and responsibilities as any other tenant. Next slide. Affordable and supportive housing needs in the New River Valley. Housing continues to be in need in the New River Valley. Local studies, as well as our point-in-time count surveys, and those currently on program waitlist, indicate the extreme need for safe, sanitary, and affordable housing. The proposed unit is compatible to our local point-in-time count data and the increasing needs of housing for individuals. New River Community Action, New River Community Services, excuse me, currently has 42 households in their permanent supportive housing program. 10 of these households are already housed in the New River, I mean, in the Radford City area. Local data indicates that there is a need for 4,700 affordable housing units in the New River Valley. There is 254 individuals who identified as needing permanent supportive housing. And according to our HMAS data for our agency for 2024, there was 135 people homeless who identified Radford as their place of home. So funding. We currently have a committed 1.7 from the Home Consortium, the Blacksburg Home Consortium, to which Radford is a member, and they do support this project. We also have applied for other funding. We have $2 million applied for homeless and special needs housing application, and we have committed Virginia Housing Money.
Do you want to talk about what that picture is?
Oh, yes. Good, thank you. So this is actually the first floor that we're talking about. This is the floor that we want to rezone. Right now, it is vacant, and it is shovel-ready for this project. What we're asking you for is the ability to create five new units, just five. The upper floor is already ready to go. It's already ready for those eight units that we want to create. This bottom floor will house an additional five individuals and give them the supports and the services that they need for housing.
While Casey's getting water, I'll just, Matt and Jeff show. This building is right next door to our office, New River Community Action. So all of the support services that we're talking about, from housing to our food pantry, is right next door at 206 Third Avenue. Avenue.
Why we love it. We do love it. This is a very exciting project for us. So, benefits to Radford City. So, we're not asking for tax abatement. It is in our budget to pay taxes for this property. This property is going to reduce public expenditures. It attracts state and federal money. We're not asking Radford City for any money. It is turnkey, fully shovel-ready, and it improves building and surrounding landscape. There is no density beyond compatible multifamily uses. This project is a good, it's a solutions-based project. We're here to find solutions to housing and to, you know, help us help you, because we're trying to find solutions to the issues that we're facing. And this is a solutions-based with best practices project. I want to, in closing, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to discuss NRCA's plan to bring additional safe and sanitary and affordable units to Radford City in the region. I'd also like to tell you, you know, NRCA just celebrated their 60th year. We've been in business, we've been here in Radford for 60 years providing services. This is an opportunity for us to expand those services and to do more and even greater work in your community, and we really would like the opportunity to do that. The location for this project is ideal, like Jennifer stated. It is literally right next door to our hub, our main office right there in Radford. The hub is within proximity of shopping, healthcare, recreation, and employment opportunities. The bottom floor of the property has remained vacant for several years, and the project will be bringing additional revenue to the city of Radford. NRCA is committed to bring in quality services to the New River Valley. Please help us to help you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm sure council will have some questions for you. I have a couple of questions. The folks who you'll be working with to live there, are they currently involved with Community Action? Is this something there would be an application process for? And would those folks come from that 123 or so that I think you mentioned in the city of Radford, or would we be looking at bringing in people from the surrounding area?
So, these will be the folks that we're already working with. I mean, you know, NRVCS already has a waitlist of folks who are already applied for the services, they're already, they're just looking for housing. They need the housing. They need people to work with them to provide housing for these folks. They're going to come in through our continuum of care. We're the lead agency for the local continuum of care, and these are folks, yes, they are already in your community. Most people for PSH, the eligibility is that they have to be homeless or chronically homeless, and they have to have been so for at least six months. So, I mean, we have to be able to prove that. We have to be able to show that they've been chronically homeless, and they also have to have a diagnosis of disability.
And earlier this evening, you may have heard when Mr. Fleischer brought up the issue with folks that are being brought from other localities to a treatment facility outside the city. If they don't successfully complete the program or violate some covenant as a part of that, they don't necessarily have transportation to other resources, and they end up remaining in the area, sometimes coming into the city of Radford looking for additional resources. How would that be addressed with this property if you had someone who was in the system and that, you said 89% rate, so that 11% that doesn't make it, what happens with those folks?
Well, that's actually, so the 11 folks that don't make it-
Actually, I don't mind taking this one. So, Casey just mentioned that they have to meet the criteria of chronically homeless and sober for six months, so right off the bat, those folks wouldn't meet those two criteria. But we are already providing wraparound services, and some of them are shelter services where we have to bring people out of Radford and to our shelter in Montgomery County. So that would be the pool that we would start with along with our partners at NRVCS. We would start with our own clients where they already meet the criteria.
But if it didn't work out for some reason, and this was a person who maybe relapsed or had other serious needs, what would be the outcome at that point in time? Would they just be asked to leave? Would they be transported to another location? What would typically happen?
Well, since their clients were already serving, our wraparound services would continue. They just wouldn't be allowed to stay in their apartment.
But it wouldn't be like your material sitting out on the front step. You're here, you're homeless now, right?
Community action. Like, this is, everything that we're about is trying to prevent that. So, and that is the difference in this kind of project versus others. It's permanent, so everything we're doing is trying to help them be successful, people who've never been successful. So, we're going to give them everything we've got to prevent that from happening, and that's, I mean, that's all-
And the reason I asked that question is that was asked of me regarding this project, that if someone doesn't make it, what happens? Are they homeless in around Third Avenue and just hanging around? So, council, are there other questions that you all have this evening?
On that note, when you were saying contingent upon sobriety, are, is there, once they get this apartment, is there continual testing, or how is that, are they in breach of contract if they do bring drugs? And then what's the process of eviction and then refilling that in that scenario?
So, it's, I need to clear something up there. It's not contingent on sobriety, like, it's contingent to be there, but it's, this is a housing force. So that means that we recognize that they have barriers, and we're here to keep them on track. So, but at the same time, this isn't substance abuse. We don't provide those kinds of services. We would have partners to help people if that's the issue that they need, but our primary focus is mental health and disabilities, so different kinds of service. Am I wrong in that?
Make sure the expert is fact-checking this. So this is the reason why we want to be the property manager, is because when you have hands-on, when you're with people and you've got, I mean, PSH folks are, folks are in their units pretty often, at least once a month. So, as a property manager, you can work with that case manager, you can work with that housing specialist. You get an idea of where folks are. You get an idea of the services that folks need to help them, again, to maintain and to stabilize housing. So the idea is hopefully you are noticing these things about folks before it gets too far, and you're helping them to get those services that they need before they ever get to that point, because you're helping them. You're there. That's what the wraparound services are. So you're there with them, you know, you're in this with them, and that's the reason why, again, we're wanting to be, we're wanting to go into development, because we want to be able to be the help that folks need to keep people housed, not to kick people to the curb.
Well, and we've had so much success with this outside of housing, helping people do this while they are still precariously housed. So, I mean, this is the missing link in the success that we could have, is to be able to provide the housing ourselves, because often we have to work with landlords who have, who are not helpful in the process, right? So, or if you have no credit, or if you have an eviction on your record, you can't even, like, get housing. I'm looking at my housing people. They tell me that's the problem. So, I mean, with us as the landlord, it really is the best case scenario for success.
If I may step in on that, I think, I'm going to paraphrase, but I think what we're trying to get at is a lot of the concern that we've heard is what happens if there is someone that you house there that is disruptive to the community, if they are exhibiting violent behavior outside of the building or inside the building? I mean, I appreciate, you know, your goal is to make sure everyone's successful, but in the event that it is negatively impacting the neighborhood and we're having to send our officers there, I'm not saying we would need to do that, but I'm just saying, in the event, since you guys are the ones overseeing the housing, the answer can't be, well, our goal is to make sure everyone's successful. So I think what we're trying to get at is what's the line? Like, when is that person not appropriate even for that level, and when is the negative impact on the community worse than what you might positively be doing for the individual?
No, I understand what you're asking now. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we're landlords, they're tenants. So, and it's not just how much we're trying to help them. We're trying to help the community, not the greater community even, but the residents of the residents of the building, right? So, I mean, we would hate to evict someone, but like, that's what you have to do if it jeopardizes everyone in the building. Everyone's trying, some people are not able to live independently, but we're going to take the barriers out of, if it's a barrier that we can overcome, then we're going to do our best for that. If it's one that they cannot overcome, then we're going to have to help them to whatever their next step is, but not there.
But when they're a tenant, then they're just like any other tenant that I would have in my rental property, and I'd have to go through the established legal steps to get them out.
Correct. They have rights, just like any other, they have tenants' rights and responsibilities like anyone else with a lease. They have a lease, they sign their lease, and they have those rights. You know, just a reminder that there are already 10 individuals living in Radford who are on this program that are living successfully. So, I mean, it is a national, I mean, permanent supportive housing is not something new. There are companies like Housing Works that used to be, they used to be Virginia Supportive Housing. This is what they do. They go around and they build homes and they build units for people to for permanent supportive housing. This isn't a new concept. It's been around for a while. What we're asking you to do is to allow us the opportunity to be a developer and to actually develop the first permanent supportive housing in the New River Valley.
Are these rooms just set up for a single individually and not a family? So if a family was in need, this wouldn't work for them?
So, these units will be set up for individuals or for couples. I mean, it could be for a couple as well, but for, right now, this project is actually established for, and that is because that is what our data tells us is needed. That's what, when we do our point-in-time counts every year, when we do our surveys, that's where we find that there is the most need for housing is for individuals, not necessarily housing for families, in the homeless world, in the homeless sector.
And did I hear you say that the property would stay on the tax rolls?
Yes, sir. Will we be paying you taxes for that property? There will be revenue for Radford.
For how long?
For as long as we own it.
We actually established, it's a wholly owned subsidiary LLC, the 212, 212 Third Avenue LLC. So while Community Action owns the property, the LLC runs it, and it will, we will not ask for tax abatement on that property.
So, I'm a property owner, and I rent to people, and I just had today to go to the courthouse to work on eviction, you know, of people that are, you know, not doing what they're supposed to do. So you're telling me that somebody that is not doing what they're supposed to do, being disruptive, doing drugs, having the police call, that kind of thing, you're going to have to go through the courts to remove them?
That's right.
So it's taking me a month and a half to do that for one house. So those people that are going to be staying there for an additional month and a half, I mean, are there going to be additional rules and restrictions and, you know?
Support those people.
The support is not, we've already made it very clear that a lot of people that are in this situation don't want the support. They just want to be difficult. I'm not saying everybody's like that. There are people that legitimately need help, but a lot of them are just difficult, and they do not want to accept the help, no matter how much help you give them. So when they're being difficult for a month and a half while you're trying to kick them out, and then they don't show up to court, and then there's a continuance, and it becomes an issue for them just staying there for free being difficult. And then when they finally do get, you know, the court to remove them, you're saying you're going to help them have supportive services. Well, what if they don't want that, and then what happens? So do you just literally have them say you have to leave, and you remove their stuff, or have the police come and remove their stuff for them? Like, where do they go after that?
Well, I mean, so, one of the great advantages of this is that we're already providing the services. So we're not providing services to people who don't want it. We're not talking about choosing people who don't, I mean, these are some people that we have been supporting for years, but they had, you know, I mean, it's not a renter's market, especially if you have an eviction, or any kind of problems, or can't pay. Can't pay more than 30% of your income. So, we're not talking about just taking anybody, like, these are people we're already serving. So when I say that we'll continue to provide the services, it's not the services they just started getting whenever they moved in with us. They were getting services. They qualified for the program, so they, we offered them this opportunity.
Can you, can you talk a little bit, you're mentioning the services that you can provide and wraparound services. Can you give us an idea of what's that look like? What are the options that people have that you can provide?
I mean, you're better at this than I am, but I mean, like, it all starts usually when they come in with, like, financial literacy and then workforce development. Case management, so everything from making sure they get to doctor's appointments if they're, and manage their meds. I mean, case management is a broad, sweeping service based on the individual's needs, and that is the difference maker, because it's not, I'll remind you that your rent is due in five days. It's also like having this community next door to us where, I mean, sometimes the reason they haven't been successfully housed long-term is because they don't have, what I would say is the soft skills to know that you can't take things from your neighbor's porch. You can't, you know, I mean, and those are the kinds of things case managers, job coaches work with them on, and, or they lose jobs, so we help them get another one. That, it's comprehensive. Am I-
You're right.
I'm doing okay.
You're doing okay.
I think, just one thing that I think that we, it's more just to add, but we also need, we as a council have to keep in mind that, you know, that is a business district, a corridor that we're promoting, as we're trying to climb out of some of our economic challenges, we're really trying to, you know, recruit businesses, build businesses, and that strategically, that's kind of, you know, where we've pushed a lot of that, and we're pretty limited in a nine-square miles of where we can do. So, you know, again, not so much a question, but I know that it's strategically located near you guys, which is a plus, but it's also located very close to the university students and also to our business district, where I know that it's set vacant right now, but ideally, you know, we would love to have a thriving business as we look to grow that. So, I just think that that's something also that we'll have to keep in mind as we, through this process.
Do you know how long it had been vacant?
My understanding is that the current landlord purchased it in 2016, I believe, and so it's been vacant since then.
I remember when they got the special use permit. It was prior to us taking office in 2018, and I don't know that they've ever filled the apartments during that time. Speaking of which, so you have nine, or two nine-bedroom apartments on the second floor. Let's just say, is this rezoning crucial to doing the entire project, or are you able to do the second floor project regardless of what happens with the first floor?
Well, the second floor alone is not sustainable. It's not a sustainable property. So, like, we need the additional units to, for it to be a sustainable project.
And it'll be a total of how many people? I know it's, how many? 13 people living there? Okay, okay. Are there any other questions from council? Now, we're going to open the Planning Commission meeting in just a minute, but Planning Commission, do you all have any questions? Well, we'll ask for the citizens to ask questions here in just a moment. I wanted to make sure Planning Commission asked any questions that they had.
When you say that they're going to have different types of disabilities, give me some examples. What do you mean?
Autism, first and foremost. It's the one I'm most familiar with. My daughter has autism. Our partners at NRVCS, that's who we work with on that. So, it could be mental health, but, or physical disabilities, which is why the elevator was so important.
So that data comes from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. They are a national agency that does nothing but supportive housing. They are a nonprofit agency, and this is, they do training. Thank you.
So at this time, what I'm going to do is ask the Planning Commission if you all call your meeting to order, and then we'll open the public hearing, and we'll allow anybody to ask a question of our presenters first, and then we can get into the presentations or other questions beyond that. Does that sound fair? Okay. So, Ryan, if you want to call your meeting to order and see if you have a quarrel. Okay. So we are now ready to open the public hearing at 8:15, and since we had several folks who want to ask questions, I'm going to let you all come down first. So come on down to the podium, ask your question, and then while we have our folks from Community Action here, they can answer those questions. If there are statements to be made, we'll get to all that in just a minute. So whoever wants to go first with a question?
I just want to, for a clarification question. Currently, is this, are there individuals in, on the second floor? Yes. If this change goes through, well, this is a little tongue-in-cheek, will it become unhoused? But that's maybe a bad joke. But when you talk about the green space, I know that currently, the unit you all are in- I know that currently the, the unit you, you all are in has a little green space, and individuals are there way past when you guys are closed. Is that the green space you're talking about in front on Third Avenue?
On the side yard.
Side yard. Front, on Third Avenue, side yard.
Well, the, what you're talking about is two, six green space, not.
But that's what they're using. But I'm just saying, when you take it over, is that what you're talking about?
We're talking about the, the side space between the two buildings.
Yeah.
That'll be the green space.
But what road is that on?
Uh, Third Avenue.
Third Avenue. That's what I want to know. So the green space is Third Avenue facing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer your question about kicking out our upstairs tenants.
I didn't say kick them out.
Well, we have a.
Unhoused.
Right. We would transition, we would pay to transition them to other housing, like it's in our development plan to do that. But they are currently clients of ours that receive support, so we, they could move right back.
Okay. And ma'am, you had a question? Please come on down and, and that, actually, it was Keith Walton's with the question, if you didn't know. Ma'am, if you'll just state your name for the record and ask your question.
I'm Rebecca. You're out. So my question is, I realize that you want to provide a lot of services, comprehensive services, which will be needed. But where will you be loc, you're right beside of the building. Where, where will you be on weekends when people may need some help?
And if you all respond to the questions through the microphone so everybody can hear.
So we're not going to be the only provider of services. I mean, we're, we're partnering with other providers. So NRVCS is one of the main partners that we're working with on this program. And so there will be, there'll be people available for them to contact, I mean, whenever they need those additional services. Because again, they're going to have those wraparound supports. It depends on what that individual's needs are and who will they be able to call.
But for the building itself, it will have a property manager that is trained in permanent supportive housing, as well as, let's see, like, community.
Oh, a community care.
Coordinator that coordinates those type of services for them too. So they have a Community Action point person that calls, that arranges things for them. So they're not just out there with a list of phone numbers, like, if you need help, call these people.
Will that property manager be on site around like 24/7? What, what does that look like?
No, the property manager is, is not on site 24/7. It, I mean, it's a Community Action property manager specific, with that specific training, but they're on call 24 hours.
Who would be the person calling them? The renters that are being.
Either that, or the community court, uh, community services coordinator for the tenants.
That's not there all the time. That's, that's just.
They're on call all the time. I mean, it's just not big enough to have them on site. Although we do have community space for them to, if they had appointments with their counselors or something like that, they can have that on site. But there's not room to house anyone on site 24 hours. No, I mean, it's an apartment building, right? It's not a facility like that.
Okay. Are there any other questions specifically for our friends from Community Action? And just be sure to state your name for the record.
My name is Nelson Sifford. I'm a longtime member of First Baptist Church, which is directly across the street from this proposed building. I have several, when you answered several nice presentation, and you answered most of my questions, but I do have several things that I'm concerned about. Grounds maintenance. We have already at First Baptist, we already have several incidents of not vandalism, but trash. When we go to church on Sunday morning, we have to clean up, do certain things. Do you have that in mind for your particular building?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, but you're right. I mean, yes, it's a, it's a problem. And so, and as the other gentleman mentioned, sometimes people hang out at our building even when we're not there.
I was going to ask that.
Yes.
But number two, security. What if someone that you put in the apartments has a family? Say a husband or a wife, and they have brothers and sisters that sneak in on you, which, as I know that can happen. What, what is your plan for that?
Well, good luck, because we're right next door and they have a case manager. I mean, it, I'm not saying that's the be-all, end-all, but like, we, we have to, like, I would love to put some people on the spot and say, how often do you meet with your clients? But it's like weekly. I don't know how they'll be able to do that.
So you're saying it could be transit weekly, people in and out?
No, no, I mean, like, we, we meet with.
Provide services.
We provide services a lot. I don't know how they would hide it.
Right. Okay.
And we'll be providing, providing them in the building, in the community room.
What about security? Do you have any plans for security for the people that are there? Are you going to be supervised 24/7?
Well, I mean, we have planned on cipher locks to be able to get in, and cameras at the front, like we have on our building.
Please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
We can't, yes, thank you.
But, yeah, I mean, it's meant to be independent living, so just electronic security.
And you're saying there's nine apartments there now?
There are.
Are you, any plans of expansion further out?
No.
In the future?
No.
Okay. The building will stay intact as?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sifford. Who else has a question for us?
I'm Ben Bondurant. My question was, you had mentioned different disabilities. Is substance abuse one of those disabilities? None of them will have substance abuse issues.
When you answer, will you be sure to answer into the microphone?
He said, he asked if substance abuse would be one of the disabilities. I mean, so we are partnering with other organizations to provide support services, but that's actually not what Community Action does. We're part of a network of the recovery ecosystem, but those are not the services that we intend to, that, that we currently provide. So I can't say that it, that no one, I mean, it's a coexisting thing with a lot of, with mental health and what have you. And so those are support services that we'll definitely provide. But no, I wouldn't say that nobody's going to have them.
All right. Any additional questions for Community Action?
Johanna Hicks, investor right here in Radford City. I have a lot of concerns about this, and obviously I will have some time to speak about this, obviously. But one of my biggest concerns is we, we have changed all of our properties into being from student apartments and house apartments or housing for the students to families with kids. And my biggest concern is you're going to have single human beings in there that are going to have, including mental issues, and there's all kinds of mental issues. And I do have a special needs son, obviously, but, and so my concern is, are you going to have sex, people that are in the sex list? Are you going to have, are you?
No.
So just for clarification on that, are you asking, are you going to have registered sex offenders?
Yes, exactly.
And so the answer from Community Action is? Would you just answer into the microphone?
Yeah. So one of our programs at Community Action is Virginia Cares, and we, it's a offender reentry program. So, I mean.
So the answer is yes?
I can't say that. I mean, well, there's not going to be any children in that building. It's all for just single people.
But there is children around the properties.
Sure.
We have four properties right next door, and they all have children, lots of children.
Well, any landlord can't, I mean, it's, it's not a landlord.
So, yeah, your answer is you're not, not sure. I, I don't want us to get into a big debate with it.
Right.
Is a question and answer. So the question was, would there be, potentially be people from the registered sex offense list? And your answer is you're not certain?
Right.
Correct? Is that what you're stating?
That's my, yes, because.
Ninety percent, a hundred percent, fifty percent?
Well, what I'm saying is, we're still just a landlord. And as a landlord, that's not the, on the application. So.
That's not on your application to be able to get housing?
For, am I wrong on that?
If you're on a sex offender list, you're not.
Because before, we had Head Start right across the street at First Baptist, so we would definitely have had to check for that, but it's not there anymore. So, but it's not historically who we serve. So.
Okay.
Well, you also have ex-combets, because I do know your organization also provides housing for ex-combets.
Right. And that's the Virginia Cares program that I was talking about, which has a ninety-four percent success rate in, in people not going back to jail. So it's a highly successful program. But again, like, they are not, they don't meet this criteria of chronically homeless, right? I mean, like, remember what the criteria is for permanent supportive housing. So if they're coming out of jail, that's, they don't meet that criteria. So.
But they were. So they are coming out of jail, and so they were people that were in jail. So that, that answers my question.
But the criteria for our project is chronically homeless. People we are serving right now that are chronically homeless, and that's not offenders.
And another, one of my biggest concerns.
Just so we're clear, we don't provide housing for people coming out of jail. We help them find housing.
So, again, just for clarification, this is not transitional housing from jail to other neighborhoods, is what you're stating? But it is possible that if someone has an offense on their record, that they could potentially be in the program? Is that accurate? Okay.
Yes.
Just trying to get to clarification, so we're getting to answers to questions.
Thank you.
You are also a nonprofit, but you said that you're going to be paying taxes. Are you going to be paying business taxes now too?
So we actually, even as a nonprofit, we have to pay quite a few taxes, right, personal property and all of that. So what I'm saying is that we wouldn't ask for an exemption on our real estate taxes. We would pay real estate tax on the building, just like any other business.
As you mentioned in your presentation, you got millions of dollars from the government and from different organizations, which a lot of that is taxpayers' money. And so here we are competing with, you know, obviously, as investors, trying to make sure that we have rental properties for our tenants that are able to, you know, be able to pay now into a program that is obviously pretty much subsidized, pretty much almost a hundred percent, will you say? Almost a hundred percent, because it's millions you're getting.
Uh, no, it's, they have to, they have to pay rent. So I, I don't know what the Radford section eight looks like. Somebody else referenced it. We don't, we don't manage that, but it's, so this isn't that. It's not that.
Where, where is, where is the money going that you guys are going to be collecting from rent? Because obviously, you don't have a mortgage. Is that correct? The money that you're going to be using, you won't have a mortgage.
Right.
And so therefore, it's pretty much what a lot of people call free money, which is not free money, it's taxpaying money. Okay.
Well, you asked where the money went. I'm happy to answer that, because as I said, like, in order for this to be feasible at all, we need, we need more apartments than the ones we have, frankly, right? Then, because providing these services, we don't bill for them. They're, so like, paying the property manager, paying the, the, that community services caseworker that we're talking about, paying like, all of these support services, we're providing those. And so that, that is, that thirty percent of rent that they're paying isn't covering that. So, yeah, I hope I'm answering your question.
But this is where the business industry comes in. Us as investors have to come out with money for maintenance. If a water breaks, if the electricity goes out, or something happens with the heat pump, or the roof, or whatever problem it is, it's on us. And so that's what I'm saying, that not all of the money that is coming from you guys is actually, is coming from your organization to pay for this directly. It's actually some way, shape, or form coming from other sources. So that's my biggest concern. So thank you.
I just want to, I'd like to respond to that, because the money that we have is to actually develop this project, to buy the building and, and do the, the renovation. It's not for ongoing, it's not for the ongoing.
You have capital funds, you don't have operational funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other specific questions based on the presentation for Community Action? Yeah, Keith, did you have one more question? Then I'll let you finish up. Okay?
Yeah, just, just kind of for some clarification. So first of all, you guys are really tough, so that's good. Just good compliment. But as far as, so the $2 million, I'm assuming that I got the math right, the $2 million. First of all, it's thirteen units. Is that right? It's about a hundred and eighty, whatever, thousand per unit. Why, if that's such a large investment, and it is, besides being closer for like a quad-style scenario, why would the rest of, why didn't the rest of the New River Valley or someone else like Christiansburg or Blacksburg step up and say, we want that $2 million investment? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Actually, it's been really difficult to find a, a property that meets criteria. And this one is this close, but like, we have one floor that doesn't meet criteria. It's zoning and, and the cost of the property. We, but, we believe in Radford.
Well, thank you, and thank you to everyone for asking the questions. We're going to give everybody an opportunity to make their statements if there's any additional questions. For, for our friends from Community Action, do you all have anything else you want to say before you have a chance to have a seat?
Yes, I just want to say that it is a business. I mean, we, she's asking about how we're going to do ongoing maintenance. Well, that's what the rents that's coming to us, or the subsidies that are coming for those rents, that is what that's for. That is how we will pay the ongoing maintenance on the building. That's how we'll cover, you know, somebody asks about grounds maintenance. I mean, we have to, we'll have to hire people to do some of these jobs. I mean, we, we already do that, but we're going to need, you know, and that's, that's what that money is coming in here for. It is a business. It will still be operated as a business.
How much is the rent a month? You said seventy-one dollars, something like that?
It's thirty percent of their income. So it's individually.
Have a job. They have to have income. What, so what happens when they don't have a job and they're not paying rent? And I have that a month and a half, two-month, however long scenario, so you don't get any income during that time?
That's right. It's actually built into our business model. By all means, answer accurately.
So permanent.
I just know the budget.
Right. So permanent supportive housing, that's what permanent supportive housing does. I mean, folks that will come into this and, and not have an income, that's what permanent supportive housing pays for. And then those wraparound services, and we talked about employment, we talked about the services that people need. That is what those support services do. They help those folks to, to do, to do just that. Then you got to remember, some of these people have disabilities. So some of these folks coming in here, their, their income is SSI, SSDI. So how many people in the room understand exactly right now, if you're on SSI, what the average right now is for someone living with, on, on SSI? Do you know how much that is?
Nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
It is nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Do you know how much even a single-room occupancy in the city of Radford right now is for? Anybody know? Who wants to tell me? Nine hundred and fifty dollars. So the, the whole point in this program is, is that we're helping people that do not have the means. I mean, because these are people living with disabilities. I mean, this is, this is someone who has, I'm going to use a personal example. I have a brother-in-law. He got hurt in an accident at twenty-two years old, left him in a wheelchair for the rest of his life. He is on disability. This is for people like him who need housing. People who, people who need to have a place to stay so that they can get the other services that they need. People who want to live and live in a community, just like you do. These are people that need those housing services, and this is what we want to do. We want to be able to have these housing for people. We want to be able to help them. We want to be able to give them these wraparound services so that they can live, again, with autonomy, autonomy and dignity in our communities. So.
We appreciate you all coming to present to us. Did you have another question you wanted to ask, Seth?
The, the one thing that I just wanted to make sure that was clear too, is because I agree that there are people that need this help, and we want to, to help these people. But I think that what concerns me is a little bit, is there doesn't seem to be any provisions for the ones that don't meet that criteria. So that's a concern for me, is for every one of those, there's also someone who, it doesn't feel like there's any accountability in place if they are using, or if they are doing this. Is, is, do you see what I'm saying? I think that that, that.
Is there a formal policy?
Right.
Do you have a formal policy for that?
Or the lease is just strictly based on that, but it's not predicated on any job, any, any being clean, or any of these things. It's just strictly a lease for housing.
I mean, yes and no, because we're providing services already. So we want, we're going to start with the people who this is their last, the missing link, right? And so it's not like somebody that we just met where we're asking them to fill out something and we're learning about them in the application process. And that, that is different than, so, you know, and while, you know, Casey has her brother-in-law, I have my daughter who has, is on the profound end of the autism spectrum. They have very different needs and services, but like, we're going to look for other people. If those are the services we're providing and have a great network and are doing that, then, you know, that's the kind of other tenants that we want to have, so we can support people well.
Thank you.
So folks can hear, Ryan asked, Ryan Watson asked, how long is the application process? Could you talk a little bit about that process? And how long do folks typically work with you before? And how long do folks typically work with you before they get this kind of housing?
Well, since this is the first time we've done it, it's not like I have precedence. But, I mean, we've got the criteria that we have to meet, so that, first and foremost, like, chronic, chronically unhoused. Do we have a time limit in the application? I mean, do, are we looking for a specific timeframe? I mean, clean for six months, for sure, in that sense, but.
Well, so, I mean, folks are already coming through the COC, there's already.
Be sure to come up to the microphone, so everybody can hear you, and we appreciate your patience with all of.
Casey's talking about the continuum of care, so, you know, I mean, like, we have the shelter program, we have rapid rehousing program, like, we have everything up to actually providing housing. So we have a plethora of candidates to choose from that are, that we know meet this criteria. So I would imagine, this, we, this project originally started because of a gentleman that we, that Casey had been serving for a couple of years, who was chronically unhoused, and we were able to help him. And, and he was complex medically, and so he wasn't getting medical care. So, you know, it was, but we served him for years before we were able to find, like, find and support him in that way. Right on Downey Street, actually, is where we were able to, to find a place for him, so. That's who we're starting with. We want to be successful, we want this to be a replicable model that we can do across the NRV.
So the question was, these are people that are already in your program, that are part of the success of the program thus far, and this is just another step that you're taking, correct?
Yes, this is the end of the continuum, actually being able to provide housing. No, chronically homeless. Six months is how long they have to be sober.
I mean, I don't see any clear criteria for whom is going to be a tenant. They can do this, you're saying, okay, it's a spectrum, but there has to be some sort of delineation of what that spectrum encompasses. For example, someone asked you, does that include someone with a disability or drug problem?
Right.
And you can't say no, of course you can't say no. But where are the specific, I think a lot of people would like to know, what is the specific criteria? Of who comes and who doesn't? Now you're saying that it's people you work with, but earlier you said it's people that are homeless.
Well, we work with chronically homeless people, so they are the people we worked with before.
That's fine, but what are the criteria? Are they not drug abusers? Well, no, not really. Are they not child abusers? Well, no, we can't guarantee that. There has to be some form of criteria.
Well, I, I do understand, we, we have gotten this question a lot, because people do want, want, they want us to say, our NRVCS people will be adults with autism, our, it'll be vets with PTSD, like, those are, we have, there's a lot of reasons that people are not housed.
It can be any of the following, nobody's asking you to pin it down one.
Right, well, I mean, it kinda. Well, the criteria is they have to be chronically homeless, and so for us, that would look like they've gone through the continuum. We, right, like, we met them in the shelter, we got them in rapid rehousing, or they're in the Section 8 program, or that.
I think that's probably important for you to maybe take a moment to expand on a little bit, because I, I think you, you guys know a lot more than we do, and so there's some pieces for those of us that are not as sure as to when you say wraparound services and things of that nature, what that means. I think, again, I'm paraphrasing, you can correct me, but to get in this program for this housing, is the only requirement, you, you have to have a history of homelessness? Or is it that you've successfully been in these types of programs, and now they're ready for the advancement and the responsibility of, of a home? Is there any criteria that would make it not appropriate for someone? If they were an active drug addict right now, is that a criteria? Is that something, no? If it's someone that's violated their probation, would that be a reason that you couldn't rent to them, or you wouldn't? What, what are, am I, is that what you're trying to get to?
There's two, the two criteria.
So inclusion and exclusion criteria, what includes these people, what excludes these people?
Well, the clear criteria is chronically homeless and six-month sobriety. Like, they have to have been clean. Sobri, they have to have been clean for six months, we have to know that they've been clean for six months, and chronically homeless.
Do you drug test?
We will have to, for entry.
How do you tell that they've been clean for six months? Where, where do you get that information from?
Well, it would have to be from where we've been working with them already, so.
So there is a continuum of care, so, so people call into Central Intake. When people come, like, when people call us and they say they're homeless, they call into our Central Intake, and the first thing we do is we do diversion with these folks. So diversion is, where else can they go? Do they have a family member, do they have a friend, do they have somewhere else that they can go? And someone asked earlier tonight about folks that come into our community that really have more supports or come from another community. We actually have a very limited pot of money, where folks that, that come in, and they're homeless in our community, but they're willing to go to, back to another community, we have funding to help them to get there. I mean, it's not a huge amount, but, but we have, we've done bus passes for people before, the, especially during to our house season, when we do our diversion, we'll send folks, or we'll put them on buses, and we've sent them to other states. We've, we've done an Uber one time, we paid an Uber to get someone back to another community. The only thing that we do there is we make sure, we have to verify that they are going somewhere else when they get in that community, and that we're not sending them to another community to be homeless. Then we also have, when they come through, if, if we can't get them past the diversion piece, if they don't have someone else that they can stay with, they don't have other resources, and then they might then qualify for emergency shelter, so we look for emergency shelter beds. If there's no emergency shelter beds, which as all of, many of you probably already know, we have a very limited amount of emergency shelter in the New River Valley. We have a program that operates from November to March every year, and we stay full every night. We're full from, from day one to the end of folks needing housing. So from there, then they qualify for rapid rehousing. In order to qualify for rapid rehousing, then you have to be literally homeless to qualify for rapid rehousing. So from then there, they'll work with our caseworkers, our caseworkers look to help them find housing. We, we look at the barriers they have to housing. Why can't they maintain their housing? What is it about their barriers that we need to address to help them to locate housing? And, I mean, it's, it's, it is a challenge for some folks. I mean, some folks have multiple, they do have multiple incarcerations, and when you're working with private, or with certain landlords, they, they're able to set their own criteria. So this does become a challenge. Then we have folks that come into the program who are not literally homeless, but they might be in jeopardy of becoming homeless. So that's another population that we serve. These are folks, right now, we have a homeless prevention program. So these are folks that are about to be evicted, about to lose their housing. Now, there is an income restriction of 30% of the area median income. You guys seen this evening what 30% of the area median income looks like? $23,050 for an individual. A family of four can earn up to $39,000 and still qualify for that program. We can do some simple math, I think you guys know that it, you know, it's, a lot of people don't really qualify for that. Then we have, we don't have transitional housing, but in the continuum of care, there is transitional housing. Now, there are, there is a local, the Women's Resource Center has transitional housing. But then the next part of that continuum is that permanent housing piece. Once you get them through that continuum, once they're through those things, the final piece is that, that housing, that permanent housing, the permanent housing with the wraparound supports to help them to maintain that. So in reality, it can take a while for people to get through the system. I mean, again, these are people that we have, we have been working with these folks. NRVCS has already got a waiting list, like I mentioned earlier, of folks who have already gone through all this process. They're already working with them. What they need is a place to call home. I mean.
For clarity, they're, they're already calling Radford home. There's verification that they're already in Radford somewhere, they're just not housed in Radford.
Right, as I mentioned earlier, there's 100.
For every tenant you have, they will have someone that calls Radford home.
Yes.
I mean, like, I don't know why, I can't, I'm just, I wanna be 100% honest, but I can't imagine, like, how, it would not be that. Like, we have a waiting list here for Radford.
Well, it could be someone from Montgomery County, or Christiansburg, or something else, is that a possibility?
Yes, it is a possibility, yes.
And it's not only Radford people, only.
Do you go through the Radford list first to, for?
That's what I'm saying, like, we have a waiting list in Radford, so I don't know, I don't know why it wouldn't be, and.
In the event that, that.
It would definitely be in our.
The number of homeless, they, the ones that met the criteria, say there's 30. Once you've gone through them, at that point, there could be someone from another community, but for the most part, well, your priority and your focus is to help the folks that are living in Radford, that are residents of Radford, they are getting priority placement, is that correct?
I mean, and it's not hard to figure out why, because like, this is where we've been serving them, this is where they have their support network, we're trying to help them build their support network here, whether it's a church, or, you know, their job, so, like, we're trying to build.
And you know they're resident because you've been working.
That's right, and we might have even been putting them up in Hotel Votel here.
I, I just wanna ask again, because I, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not sure of what the answer was, and I wanna make sure, because I think this is a question that I keep hearing come up as well, is, is there a policy, if there is a tenant that is disruptive to the building and the community, what do you do? If we're sending our officers there, it.
We evict, I mean, like, we're a landlord.
We go through the same process that I do.
Yeah, I do, like, we have to go through the same process as you do. But, I mean, at the same time, like, we will do other things, even, even as we're evicting, we're still going to provide services, because if this wasn't right for them, we're not just gonna put them on the street again, so.
But they won't necessarily stay there and maintain an address at the building that maybe is not working out for them.
That's right.
Because I'm sure there'll be some that it won't work out for, and there needs to be a contingency plan for that.
So did, I'm sorry, am I interrupting you? No, no, go ahead. So, I'm, I'm, just wanna make sure I'm understanding, so you said one of the wraparound services that you do not include is substance abuse?
We don't provide those services, we have partners for that.
Okay, and you also said that there is, you have to be sober for six months to be able to even apply for this. So my question was, how do you determine if they've been sober for six months? And you said that you drug test them to determine that? How do you determine that? Because if they're in your program, but your program does not offer substance abuse, but they can't be in your program if they're doing drugs, how do you verify that? I mean, and then.
So I guess, I guess that, I'll go back to that case management thing. So the case manager knows all of the services that they're receiving, so even if we're not providing that service, they know that they are getting that service, and they are meeting with the people who are providing that service, and they are coordinating that.
So if they have a parole officer that was giving them regular drug tests?
That's exactly right, or.
You would have access to that information?
That's right.
And so, once they're in your house, and say they get off of their parole officer's drug testing, how do you determine that they're still not doing drugs? You can't do that, like you said earlier, because I can't drug test my tenants to make sure that they're, you know, doing that. And you said that there's a property manager, but they're not there very often, maybe they're a week, you know, but they're gonna know when they're coming in, so my concern is really just people that, you know, the people that do need help, they absolutely do, but there are a lot of people that take advantage, and there are a lot of people in our community right now that are taking advantage, that we're having to clean up the mess from. And I'm afraid that, my concern is there's not accountability and policies in place to protect our citizens and our businesses and our community that are in that area from that happening. And I, as I know it happens, I wish that it didn't. And I wish we could just have this housing for the people that really do need it and are gonna respect it.
Well, I mean, I think this is the best shot at having that, because we will know. I mean, anybody that's gonna refuse our services aren't, isn't going to be there. Anyone that's using, again, is going to, they're going to fail in other areas, right? So, I mean, we have that, we have that relationship, we have that relationship, so.
I do wanna add, just on another note of this, is I did take the opportunity to walk through the property, because I wanted, many of you know, if you watch these meetings, I'm a visual, so I like, I have to go and kind of walk the space myself. What I will say is the space that they've accommodated and made into an apartment was definitely a very, very nice space. So it was definitely an upgrade to the building, it looked very nice and was very well-kept, and that is really where the majority of the apartments are, correct? And how many of those right now have people in them? Or are you waiting until, you have to wait till this is done before you can place people in?
See, I, I mean, we, there's client privileges and client rights, I mean, I, I can't share certain information this evening.
I just wanna number, not names. Like, is there, like, is four of, are four of them rented out?
There's four, yes.
We, you have four currently rented out successfully to this point.
Just for clarification, because I thought that the, the purchase was contingent upon the rezoning, so have you actually already acquired the property?
No, we haven't, we're renting them from the current owner.
Okay, so you're renting, because it's, I, I did see where it was contingent upon the rezoning.
Yeah, the tenant, the tenants, we're not renting, the tenants are renting, and we're providing their support.
Okay, so, but they're not technically renting to you right now that are renting to, okay.
The grant is contingent on, is really to buy the building, it's contingent on your purchase?
That's right.
Okay.
Is, is there one contact that the community services, or it's each department, as your client needs? Or is there one contact there for you guys?
So for this project, I do have a, I do have one, actually two contacts, in that, are you asking me for that contact? So it's Patty. Who does permanent supportive housing, Patty Dotson.
Dodson?
Dotson, mhm, yes, she is the supervisor of the, the program. And then the, the tenants have their own case managers, when they're in the program, they will have their own case manager. Each case manager has a caseload of the certain number of people on their caseload that they would respond to.
Yeah, I'm on that board, and I'm learning a lot. When you say case manager, is that in a particular one of the departments that Community Services does?
Well, okay, so let me, let me.
Every different type of mental or substance has their own case manager?
Right, some people think of case management, and you think of the case man, like, mental, there is a mental health case manager. Let me back up a little bit, it's, they're actually called housing specialists, but basically what they do is the same thing as case management. They, they help these folks to get the services they need, they help them to, to instable and ensure that they're, they're stabled in their, their housing.
Okay, that helped me, thank you.
For the, the, the screening of drugs, are you guys doing any hair screens? Because I know that can show substances for a much longer time, yeah? Or are.
I actually don't know the answer to that, since we're about 18 months out from that.
Okay, is, is, do you think that'll be a part of, if someone is coming in with substance abuse, and the goal is to make sure that they're staying clean to be a part of this? Is that a, a part of the program to ensure that they're remaining clean?
We're going to collaborate with whoever's helping them stay clean, and whatever they're doing, we will have access to that.
So like, if they're on probation, or there's another entity involved?
Yes.
Because I would think you'd need to monitor that.
Yes, their ca, their case management will collaborate.
And I, you know what was interesting, and this is just more of an observation, but, you know, the church that's adjacent come and spoke, and it does appear that there's opportunities for collaboration, because I would think that a church would want to also be an asset. So have you reached out to some of the community entities around you to, to kind of get a feel of how they're feeling? Or are there things that you guys might be able to collaborate to provide, again, that wraparound service that you're referencing?
It's kind of funny, because the church, I, I work, my office is upstairs in First Baptist, and we first started this program without the scale, in a house they owned. So, it's how we learned on a small scale what this looked like. But to answer, the, there are, there is a ministerial association that we work with, with churches in Radford to do exactly that, and so, yeah.
Because they offer a lot of services.
Lot of services, yes.
Just along that line, just, you know, to our house, our local shelter, it wouldn't operate without our, with our partnerships with the churches, we have partnerships of over 20 churches, and so the faith-based community is a huge community for us in providing services and supports.
Well, thank you all very much for answering all those questions, we, we appreciate it. No, this is great, because the whole purpose of this evening is to receive comments, to gather information, so that everybody can be aware, ask any questions that need to be asked, so we thank you all very much. This time, I will allow anybody who needs to come. This time, I will allow anybody who needs to come up to make a comment or have a question to do so. Do you want to call the names that are already written on the roster, Melissa? Or just allow people to come up as they'd like to? Do please state your name for the record. And I do want to go on record as saying, we did receive three letters prior to the meeting. Melissa did address this a little bit. Scott Dunn of Nearby Neighborhood sent us all a letter that has gone to the Council and Planning Commission. And then Mr. Matt Hicks and Ms. Joanna Hicks have sent us letters as well. So, sir, please go ahead and state your name for the record, and please give us your comments.
Yes, my name's Keith Petrie. I am a housing counselor with New River Community Action, but I'm here as a community member. First, I want to clarify, clarify a few things. Don't let the fun hair fool you, I'm very serious about housing. PSH is, is really the, like, like Jennifer and Casey said, the last step in the continuum of care to make sure that the most vulnerable in our community are housed and are receiving the services they need. These folks are already here, whether they're coming in through a, a facility outside of the city, or they're walking the streets, you see them every day. I work with them on, I mean, it's what I do, I'm a housing counselor. So, we know when they are exhibiting signs of addiction, or a mental health flare-up, or other issues that they may have. I work closely with New River Valley Community Services and their Permanent Supportive Housing Department. The, the fact of the matter is, the people who are going to be in the 212 are, the addiction is, is a difficult piece to address, because addiction is just a symptom. Yes, it is a co-occurring disorder. However, most addiction stems from a serious mental illness, whether that be borderline personality disorder, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia. These community members that we already have here are, they're not going to get housed otherwise. And the population's just going to keep growing. I understand the concern for the safety and well-being of the community, of the children, of the, the parishioners, et cetera. But let me ask you this. Is housing these people and getting them off the street at night making your children more vulnerable than if they are out there roaming the streets? Kids throw tantrums, they go out and, and against their parents' wishes, and explore the city, and, and get into all kinds of trouble that they shouldn't. Wouldn't having these people in housing at night make the community safer? Just because, yes, this one building might seem like an issue, but it's really a solution. Because if we can replicate this model throughout the New River Valley, then we won't have to take citizens from Montgomery County, Giles County, Floyd County, Puyallaw County, the New River Valley, which by the way, we don't serve those who are residents outside the New River Valley. We're all one community in the New River Valley. So, seeing this as a city versus city issue is counterproductive, because we want to serve all who need it, not just in Radford. Though Radford is the jumping point, and it's a very crucial one, as it's central to everywhere else. And that's why people flock here for the, for the services. So if we're able to take it and put it in Giles, then Giles citizens would be in that project ideally. Also, the, the concern about addiction and ex-convicts. So I am six years clean of amphetamine addiction. I'm also a convicted felon for drug use. After getting clean, I got my degree in business management. Going to be in a program for my master's degree, starting in January. If I didn't have the support from Community Action when I first got out of jail, I wouldn't have what I have, I wouldn't own my own home, my cars wouldn't be paid off, I wouldn't have two dogs, I wouldn't be married, right? So, I just want to ask you, if this was your family member who needed help, who, who was not able to live completely independent, but also wanted to remain with dignity by being able to say that they have their own place, what would you vote for? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Keith?
Keith Welton's 202 Third Avenue, so we're just right down the street. So, someone commented about the business district, I can't remember who that was. But, fun fact, that C Street, which is Third Avenue, used to be the main entrance into Radford, as far as the business district. So, that is a fun fact. That being said, I was a supporter, and I still am, of Community Action, all, in all phases. Worked diligently to fundraise, on boards, everything else. So, I think the majority, if not everybody here, believes in those same sort of things. So this is not for me an emotional plea, one-way, shape or form. I'm keenly aware of the issues. I'm also keenly aware that, for twenty years, as a occupant of the building, I've had to overcome a significant number of hurdles in a business climate in Radford, which has at times, and that could even be one of these times today, is viewed as not very welcoming to business. And, so as people come and visit me, and the most common thing I get is, "The inside of your office is gorgeous, and secondly, why are you here?" Like, "Why are you here?" There's so many other places to be. So with that being said, I appreciate all the people who give financially to the citizens and the business of Radford. And I also agree in those that invest in the city of Radford. And this is definitely an investment. I just believe strongly, strongly, that in twenty years, the small amount of incremental gains that have been made, it took twenty years to have Brad cutting hair. Three, no disrespect, but I don't get my hair cut by Brad. But, three businesses down. That's it. That is it. So I do want the investment, I believe it's important. I believe this project is important. I just believe that as I start to see the university retreat, and I understand the economic challenges that the city faces, and that as properties become available, that it is just beautiful to leave my office, I was asked to come speak today, so I did, and I was at the office, and come home and see these gorgeous children playing in the streets. And they are vulnerable children. Half of them are definitely immigrant. Because when I take walks at lunch, and some of their family members are there, you know that. And the others aren't. But they're on bicycles, kicking balls, everything, in the streets. There is no greenway. The greenway is in front of everyone's offices. That's it. So I do believe in these sorts of projects. I'm the first one to do that. But this, right here, specifically the location, just because it adds symmetry to a certain business, does not mean it's the good for the community economically, socially, and certainly not if the goal of the citizens of Radford is to find money in order to grow our way out. I just don't believe this is one of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on down.
So I was asked to speak, my name's Rebecca Herro. And, just to give you a little background, I am a retired public school teacher of thirty-six years. Specifically, I can't talk, specifically in special education and English. And before the public school, I worked at St. Albans for ten years. So I have a heart for children, and I have a heart for mentally ill people. And I know that they do need to be taken care of. Now, I'm also here because this apartment complex is directly behind my house. It's almost in my backyard. Now, on the right side, I have the Women's Resource Center. And on the left side, I have the Gateway, the Gateway Home. And they are great neighbors, they're wonderful. I had no idea how good they were going to be. And the reason they're wonderful is because they're organized, and they have twenty-four, seven coverage. The Women's Resource Center has cameras all around. I don't ever hear anything. The Gateway Home, twenty-four, seven, I never hear anything. It's very well-run. Now, it's problematic to me, I travel. I have family in Delville. And I go back and forth between Delville, not every day, but back and forth. The reason is because my home in Radford is my family home. And my family valued that home so much, I'm so obligated to take care of it. I probably will always take care of that house. So, I have an obligation to keep the Radford home up, even though I travel. I do have family in Delville that worries about my safety. You know, Roger, specifically, he's a retired attorney. Because of his background in law, he worries about me going back and forth. But anyway, nevertheless, that's neither here nor there. I've been trying to do some research on this topic, because I like to know more about what's going on. And what I am reading thus far, this population that we're talking about that may move into this complex, I guess I will label a vulnerable population, okay? And they need help like everyone else, that's true. However, where I am at, at the Radford House, it is also a very fragile area. Now, it doesn't look fragile, because the Women's Resource Center is run so well, the Gateway House is run so well, you'd never know it's a fragile area. So what I am reading thus far is that it may not be the best decision to put a vulnerable population into an area that's already fragile. If it were to come to pass, and that's my point number one, if it were to come to pass, it would certainly be more than a surface decision. This is a very complex matter. And you can't make decisions on the surface, because they sound good, and they seem to be, you know, ideal, okay? There's going to be a lot that's going to be needed, should that situation come to pass. So number one, what I'm reading is, no, this probably isn't the right place. Yes, we need to take care of homeless, we need to take care of anybody with any kind of mental illness, any kind of disability. Is this the right location? I beg to know the answer. Point number two, and this is two of four. Regardless of who is placed in that apartment complex, I would certainly like to advocate for cameras in that parking lot behind my house. Now, Community Action has done a wonderful job of lighting up that parking lot, thank you so much. But there are still dark places. And as hard as I try, on occasion, I come in at nighttime. So, you know, it's kind of like, if Walmart can light up their parking lot, and have cameras all over the place, and have signs that say that we're under surveillance, why shouldn't that parking lot be lit up? Now, I'm going to go a step further. Below my house is another parking lot. And that's the big parking lot that we all use when Radford has big events. And the city of Radford has done a wonderful job of lighting up that parking lot, thank you. But, if you don't know, know this. On occasion, there's activity in that parking lot. How do I know that? Well, I'm a light sleeper. Okay, so I might, you know, get up at four in the morning. I used to think most activity went on between one and two, but I think it goes on between four and five. So, I don't know why people are meeting up in that parking lot. I don't care, as long as people are safe. But they meet up down there on occasion at odd times. So if you don't know that there's activity going on down there at odd hours, know that. That's neither here nor there. So point number two, I would love to see cameras. Now, if public money is going to be given, such as grant money, then I would like to see part of that money allocated towards safety. You're going to get a lump sum of money in whatever endeavor that you provide for people. Money needs to be put aside for the people who support that. So cameras and lights are very important. Number three, you might have answered this already, but I thought I should mention it, because it did worry me. I don't want to, you know, see ex-offenders placed in the same residence with children, because I'd like to not see that temptation there, should such a problem of that sort exist. Nothing against ex-offenders, they need to be taken care of too. But you seem to have answered that, that maybe there would not be children in that same building. However, also, right behind me is a Hispanic family, and they have about six or seven kids. They play in that parking lot. They're out there riding their bicycles, they're bouncing basketball. Right across from them is another family that have children. So there's a lot of children in that area. Up and down Downey Street and Grove Avenue, there are college students. Sometimes I see young women, in particular, walking at night. I, I kind of think, you know, is that a good idea? But, you know, they come down to Radford perhaps, you know, feeling that Radford is a very safe area. I don't know. Last point, I would recommend that we all increase our safety, not only for our homes, but for our person. This situation has got me thinking, and it's kind of served as a catalyst for me to kind of put in place some of the things I've always felt that I needed to do, and I kept procrastinating. I do plan to increase the safety in my own home, as I would recommend that you do, all of you. We, we all should, because of the time that we live in. I have pretty good coverage already, because I have two very large dogs at the Radford House. And, well, my lab is a hundred and fifty pounds, and so I don't think anybody's going to hurt me. But I do intend to increase my home security. I intend to increase the security on my person, and I have a permit for that. I don't think pepper spray in the dash of my car is sufficient anymore. But there are lots of alternatives, and I'm very responsible. So, you know, if that encourages you to put up those cameras, because you may be more concerned about the victim than the perpetrator, should anything happen, it seems like we're moving in that trend, that we worry more about what the victim did, as opposed to the perpetrator. So if that is an inspiration to put up those cameras, then maybe that's what we should do. I don't care what the reason is. I'd like to see security behind my house. I'd like to see security down in that parking lot below my house. So regardless of what decision is made, you can prevent problems before they happen. In public schools, we learn in Management 101 that we are proactive. We prevent managerial problems by putting certain things in place, so that we prevent those problems before they happen. You don't hear a word out of the Women's Resource Center. Well, I guess not. If you've got cameras everywhere, you're not going to hear a word. They're wonderful neighbors, I'm so thankful for them. And even the Gateway Home, twenty-four, seven coverage, it's vital. So I'm really pushing for cameras, lights. You're getting a lump sum of money, let's take a certain amount- You're getting a lump sum of money, let's take a certain amount and allocate it towards safety. And please do that and carry through with that. You know, don't get halfway through a project and at the end say, oh, well, we can't do that because we don't have enough money now. You pull that money aside from the beginning. So please, help us with safety in that area. And I'll have to do what I need to do on my end. I can't control what someone else does or the decisions they make. I can only control myself. So I'm going to be increasing my own security and hopefully, whatever decision is made, everyone will be protected, not only the children, the college students around, the residents, and those people that need help. You know, we can't put that by the wayside. We need to help our homeless people. That's true. I'm just, like the other gentleman said, I'm just not sure this is the right location for those people. So we need to find the right location. If we don't help our homeless people, we're going to have them using the bathroom on the streets like they're doing on Melrose Avenue in Roanoke. We're going to see that. So yes, we need to help them, but I'm just not so sure this is the right location unless, unless the coverage is needed, that twenty-four, seven, those cameras, those lights. There's a number of factors that can be put in place, your safeguards. So...
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Come on down.
Hello, everybody. My name's Jared Lawson. I'm not going to take up too much of your time, but I just kind of wanted to speak as an individual who's also in long-term recovery from substance use and mental health conditions. I started my recovery journey six years ago as well and I accessed a lot of the supports that individuals are talking about today. Now, I have a master's degree, got it through Radford University. I own my own home. Keith, you spoke earlier, is actually my husband. So we pride ourselves in being contributing members of the community and doing the most we can to be responsible citizens. And that all started because of programs like this. Yes, you know, there are always bad actors or bad characters that may take advantage of programs from time to time. And, you know, those individuals may be more visible, but what we don't hear about most often are all the success stories. You know, individuals like us, we tend to just stay quietly in our backgrounds and go about our business and, you know, try to be those productive citizens that, you know, we weren't for X number of years. So in terms of this program, you know, I think something that is important to consider is not just the investment financially that they could potentially bring in, but the investment it may make for future citizens and townspeople of the city of Radford. You know, these individuals will hopefully one day, like us, buy their own homes that could be in Radford, get jobs that could be in Radford, be long-term productive citizens of the community, which I hear so many people caring very deeply about. And I think that's something to consider too. You know, what is the potential long-term gains, not just financially, but also for the citizens that it could be drawing to the community or helping the citizens that are already here, which it seems like it's a good program for. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Come on down.
My name's William Yeagle. I'm the priest over, oh my gosh, at Grace Episcopal Church over on Fourth Street. Thank you for having us.
Name again, I'm sorry.
William Yeagle.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I really, I think everything has been said, but, but what I want to offer for the people of New River Community Action is how very proud I am of this effort. And I recognize so many folks who have come through and see that the good work of caring for the people in our community is our responsibility as members of this community. And I feel that, you know, I feel that scripturally, right? Like, so I have my own motivation and I don't expect that to be your motivation, but when God said it was good and very good, I take that seriously. And so it puts a demand on me and it convicts me of things that I must look closely at in my own heart. So when we see an opportunity like this, I'm very proud of the people of Radford who have spoken so highly of the effort. If they are opposed to the position in the moment, I want to applaud everybody who's come up and recognized the need, that this is something that is important for us to do as a community, to support those who are on the margins of our community. And that, that New River Community Action has kind of come up here really to offer, I think, four million dollars of investment for a floor of a building, right? That's, that's a big offer that they serve to get very little from financially, but they're doing this and kind of standing, standing the line here because they care about their community. And I just am proud of Radford for doing that. I'm proud of us for hearing that and for, for supporting those people on the margins in our community. So thank you to New River Community Action for bringing this forward tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Ben Bondurant. I'm a property owner and manager of many properties surrounding this building that's in question. It's, I've spoke with some tenants. They're not thrilled with the idea. I think because of the proximity to campus, it is not the best place for this facility. I think if you had four million dollars, you could, you could get more out of it than just that. All that being said, I think the program itself is very much needed. I just don't think it is the right location. Radford University is slowly coming back and, and in a time when they need to look their best, they don't need to have their, their students that are living off-campus worried about, you know, who's down the street. And unfortunately, that is a stigma that comes with it. But it's, it is a great service. I just don't think it's the right place for it.
Thank you, sir. Come on down.
First of all, thank you, Mayor and City Council members for allowing this platform and obviously Planning Commission as well. One of the things that I was looking into a website is actually by the research network, SSRN.com. It actually says that it's consistent as far as the, the concerns. Homeless shelters tend to be located in lower-value neighborhoods with Nave estimates indicating that shelters or homeless shelters do reduce property values by six point three-three percent. And then I do have some comments about this whole thing. Please vote no. Please vote no to disapprove and reject this proposal. Our biggest concern is that we do not need more density on this side of town. The city needs more tax revenue and that includes businesses. I mean, there are wonderful businesses downtown that are coming back to the city, just like some other people were mentioning before. I actually was at the barber shop the other day and met this wonderful gentleman there and I do think that the city is coming back. I do think, I see the efforts that you guys are putting into the city. I see the murals, I see the work that is put on the streets, on the downtown areas. I mean, you guys have done a beautiful job. I love the new little park over there by the main road. I just think that you guys have done a really good job. I know it's really difficult because you have an economic problems that you're dealing with, but this is not the place. The city needs more tax revenue. We need more businesses and a healthy and safe community for everyone. Several of our properties are right next door and occupied by families and small children, others up the street with more families and kids. This is not helping the development and growth of the city on this side of town in our professional opinion. As realtors, me and my husband are realtors, this is downgrading to the side of our community, to this side of the community that so wants to keep a safe and friendly environment for our tenants, friends and neighbors. We actually used to live it down in, in Radford before. One of the main reasons why we moved away from Radford was because of the student population. They keep coming closer and closer and closer. So as that happened over the years, we ended up buying more properties around us and then at the end, we just felt like we were in between all the students. Well, what my husband and I did within the last three years, we moved all those students away and we decided to bring families in. So we have invested an immense amount of time of our lives. Our kids have worked in all those properties, painted them, fixed floors, fixed everything, trying to make sure that the city of Radford looks presentable because we want good people to live in those places. And we never got grant money. We never got any money for, for that. We still got mortgages to pay. As realtors, this is downgraded to the side of our community that so wants to keep a safe and friendly environment for tenants, friends and neighbors. For years, we as landlords used to deal with some student tenant population. Within the last years, we have worked on maintaining and beautifying our properties. Our true intention is for the city and everyone to grow in a responsible way. Another concern is that our properties will most likely lose some of their values, characteristics, characteristics and some of those streets safe and calm. There are big concerns and a strong opposition from our tenants already and some of our neighbors surrounding this property. One of the proposals will see the development of commercial central business district and change it to a more multi-family land, which is pretty much what's happening. I understand that the, some of the part of the building wasn't used or whatever, but I do see people in there and that can be a very good location for more businesses to come. Obviously, there is all kinds of realtors and everything else, lawyers' offices up the street and everything, so it is possible. And so, I mean, there's just a lot of things and I just hope that you guys make the right decision because we do want to keep investing in Radford. We love Radford City and we really love some of these properties that we have here and we love the city. We come over here often. Our family goes to the river all the time. We love the downtown, we, we love the downtown farmer's market and, I mean, there's just really good places in Radford to come and see. So I hope that the city continues to grow in a way, well-maintained way. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask you, sir, if you give us just a minute, we want to let everybody else who wants to have a chance to speak and then you can come back just very briefly, okay?
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Brad Angel from Brad's Barber Shop. And I would like to start off by saying that like Keith, I fully support what NRVCS and what Community Action, New River Community Action are doing. I mean, it's a, it's a commendable thing that you guys do for the people that need the help and we know they need help. But I, like some of the others, and I have, like Seth mentioned earlier, have concerns about it being in the business district and losing, even though I know this will sort of be a business that is still converting it to residential. It's a residential rezoning change. And so I am not in favor and I think it's all because of the locality for me. And that's really all I have to say. Most everything else has been said, but thank you for the opportunity to speak and I really do appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks?
So like other people said, most everything's already been noted. Again, Matt Hicks, property owner, not only to own thirteen, twenty-two and fourteen-hundred, which are directly adjacent, I'm bordered by the neighbors, by the Women's Resource Center on the left and in the back and then again here. So as a property owner, I feel I'm being pushed out of my own neighborhood. There's only a couple other owners there and eventually that almost, that whole three-quarters of that block is going to be owned by entities or corporations or whatever. So I would say vote no. Just like Ben mentioned, you can take that money and buy this much bigger complex and do this much better in a more suitable location. If you look at Fredericksburg, Virginia, again, I support what they're doing and this is just trying to that flavor. My dad started and ran homeless shelters when the town didn't support him, when the church didn't support him. And guess what? Fifty years later, it's still standing and he took no credit for it because it was his service as a church member to do it. So now, they are located in a commercial district way away from the residential area and that's a big vibrant historical area. I left Fredericksburg in nineteen ninety-four, so I haven't been back in a while, but it is a viable option. We look at Eagles Nest in Floyd, Virginia, a nonprofit charitable organization that helps all types of people, et cetera. So it is a viable thing and it can be done good and great, but this location may not be the best if, like we heard a minute ago, our central business, Radford's pushing to grow that, to make it better. And as our university is trying to clean up the fraternity areas, which we hoped we were a little bit a part of, to weed out the fraternities and get more families closer to the campus, we like to see that growth continue. Now, I might be selfish, I'm investing in Radford for profit, but I didn't start that way. I lived at Downey Street in nineteen ninety-eight to about two thousand and one. And like she said, we moved away when we started having kids because the campus just kept encroaching. I not only owned those two houses, but within a stone's throw, own two other major facilities. So this will greatly affect us and as an investor, I'm deeply concerned because it will make me double-check what I'm going to do as far as investing goes. So I think I've said most everything. Let's see here. I would, I see definitely say I'd like to see more cameras, period. I'd like to see some kind of fencing along that property and some kind of signs. Because again, the neighbors that she mentioned playing in the parking lot, those are all my tenants. So I'm the one that has the Hispanic population in those two properties that have got a lot of kids. Most of them range from about this high to about that high. So they're very, very little kids that we need to safeguard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others who want to speak on this issue this evening? Seeing no one else come around for the first time, if you had an additional comment, please do keep your comments brief.
Let's be clear, permanent supportive housing by no means means that they will, one, be there forever, two, they can't hold a job. It's just not true. That permanent supportive housing, as well as the Housing Department, New River Community Action, provides services to help these folks get gainful employment, whether or not they're on social security. We help educate them on their rights and responsibilities as tenants, but also their rights and responsibilities, the rights and responsibilities of landlords. The education that we provide educates them to be better community members and take care of who is taking care of them. That being said, the goal of permanent supportive housing is to offer them a hand up, not a handout. They will pay thirty percent of their income toward rent, but that is because they will be looking for gainful income to get out of permanent supportive housing. It's not a, a, it's not a retirement solution. If the median social security income is nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and a studio apartment in Radford is nine hundred and fifty dollars, what is there left to live on? Are we going to push these people out just because they're low-income? Or are we going to take care of them and offer them solutions to their problems rather than more problems on top of problems? I urge you to be mindful of how we are taking care of our most vulnerable population. They don't have to be addicts. They don't, I mean, of all the things that we are concerned about, that's fixable, right? If they seek treatment through NRVCS with case management through them and case management through us, the wraparound services will, will help guide them in the right direction. It's proven, best practices, data from all over the country, this is a successful program and it will remain successful. So are we going to be on the tail end of that? Or are we going to show the New River Valley what compassion, empowerment and self-sustainability is?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment for the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Ryan, do you want to close out your meeting?
No.
Okay. So Planning Commission meeting is wrapped up. We thank everybody for coming out and participating and asking the questions, answering the questions. Thank you to Community Action for being so forthcoming with everything this evening. We're so appreciative. There is no action to be taken this evening. Planning Commission will continue to address this through its meetings and then we will move forward from there. So having said that, we do need to move on with some old business. And council members, we have had a request for a DMV license agent memorandum of agreement. And council members, we have had a request for a DMV license agent memorandum of agreement. I believe that it is the pleasure of council to table that at this time. Is that so?
Correct.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to table that?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. New Business Social Services has requested from the, to deviate from the state holiday schedule and follow the holiday schedule set forth by the City of Radford and Radford City Council. And as such, they would be closed on holidays as designated by the Commonwealth and on special occasions as designated by city council. So we first must give them approval and then they will get approval from the State Board of Virginia. Council, do we have a motion to approve the Social Services holiday schedule policy?
I got a question.
Yeah. We may, yeah.
Does this change cost us anything?
Hold on just one second.
It does not. It's not appropriation. It's cost neutral. The state has adopted a new process. So the DSS Board approved of this change in April. It has to go to the state board, but you all have to approve it first and then it'll go to the state board in October.
Additional costs. We have to make this approval and then the state board would have to make the approval. So are there any other questions?
So obviously, we've been pointing a little while.
Do we have a motion to approve the holiday schedule policy? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. Moving on, we are looking at membership with PMJ Interconnection, a regional transmission organization, independent nonprofit that operates electric transmission as system and a competitive wholesale electricity market for parts of 13 states and the District of Columbia. The Radford Electric Department is in the process of setting up an account with and submitting a market participation application to PJM that will be required for its purchase of wholesale power in the PJM market beginning in June 2026 after our wholesale contract that we're currently under expires. The first step is to step and set up an account. PJM requires the officer authorized representative and maintenance manager form and the form of secretary's certificate to be completed and submitted by the city. This form identifies the officers and representatives of the city and they, who have the authority to execute and maintain the documents for power purchases. Once the forms are accepted, PJM access will be granted to move forward with the market participation application process. And so this is for Mr. Meredith with our approval to ratify and approve the form and the designated representatives. Todd, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that sums it up.
Okay. Council, do you all have any questions?
Yes.
On page two, I guess, we've got some authorized people. Who is Ashley Wentworth? And what exactly would she, I assume Ashley, be authorized to do?
It's my understanding that she's going to be the broker that, that will guide the city as we participate in that market for wholesale purchases. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, for the most part. Ashley Wentworth is a GDS, having a certain process. She needs to be able to manage her documents. Door remains a failure.
But she's not speaking on our, and committing us to stuff?
She is not. Only, only the officer can do that, also one, two.
Well, she's a, she's number three on something there on page two.
So there is a difference in officer and authorized representative?
Correct.
And we can adjust that as needed, correct?
It can be changed at any time.
Okay. And who's the person that can change that? Does council have to do it or is it under the city manager's discretion?
I would think the city manager would have that authority once.
So how about this? How about we, rather than designating these individuals, we just give it to the authority of the city manager per his discretion to designate the people he sees fit and to make adjustments based on that? Is that appropriate with everybody?
It feels better.
Okay. So do we have a motion to move forward then with the PJM membership agreement?
To move.
We have a motion?
We have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? All, yep.
You may authorize the city manager to sign it, you know, on behalf of the city because I have, I think Tim and I have both found that sometimes, you know, when we're dealing with the power stuff, they can be real picky about.
Okay. So how about this? Can we amend the motion to not only approve the membership, but also to authorize Todd Meredith as our city manager to be able to sign and execute the participation?
Only him. Is that what we're saying? Only?
Only Todd. Yeah. Only the city manager. Yes.
I didn't hear all of you said there, Mike, at the end, but.
No, I'm just saying in terms of submitting the form and signing. It's not the authorized.
Oh, but it's still leaving all these.
It doesn't mean he's the only.
Okay. So we still need the part where he, though, controls those authorized people.
So do you want to do it in two motions? That we do a motion, the city manager would ratify and approve the form and the designated representatives and be authorized to sign and then we could make a motion that he's the only individual that can make that determination?
Mike, I think the question is, is, one, are there specific differences between the officers and authorized representatives and authorized representative number three? I think, and God correct me if I'm wrong, he's asking, they do not have authority to act or negotiate for the city.
Well, they're authorized. That's what it says.
Right, right.
So that bothers me.
Right. And he wants to make sure they're not, which I, yeah, I understand. Yeah, I agree.
Tim, can you tell us what the difference in the duties are between your, your officers and your authorized representatives on this? For example, you have Ashley Wentworth only listed as an authorized representative.
I can read their definitions. This is the process we've been through, so I'll read these definitions and hopefully it'll be clear. The officer, an officer of the member is a duly elected or appointed officer of a member voting the office or offices set forth in a form of the secretary's certificate. Authorized in the name on behalf of the member to bind the member pursuant to be amended and restated operating agreement. PJM Open Access Transmission Tariff and as applicable to Reliability Assurance Agreement among load service entities. Required to provide information to PJM. Including providing, executing, delivering instruments, agreements, and documents to PJM. Former secretary's certificate as well as an officer and authorized representative designation form required to identify individual in these roles. Only an officer and unauthorized representative designation form required to remove. PJM intended use for the officer responsible for annual recertification, document approvals, coordinates with the client management of the declaration authority. Authorized representative, the authorized representative or individual in the name of, or authorized in the name on behalf of member, unmember pursuant. An applicable to the Reliability Assurance Agreement. May provide information to PJM. Including providing, executing, delivering documents to PJM. As an officer and authorized representative designation form required to identify. Authorized representative designation form required to do one of these roles. PJM intended use, responsible for annual recertification. Case with client management.
So.
Legal counsel, what?
Well, I was going to just say, is this something that absolutely needs to be done at this meeting tonight or is this something we could bring back up at our October meeting? Because it feels like there was a lot to that and we may need to go back, answer any questions, summarize it, then that way everybody can feel comfortable with what we're committing to tonight.
I'll defer to Tim on that. I think these different, you know, the officers, the authorized representatives, the maintenance manager, they all perform different roles. I think that what the form calls for is for each of the individuals that are identified in these roles to sign these certificates that are at the end of it. And there's also more explanations on each of these certificates as to what an officer, an authorized representative, and a maintenance manager are. My understanding is, is that, that, Tim, you can speak to this, but it's my understanding that Tim was wanting to move this along because the purpose of this form is really just to set up the account for now. You're not actually looking at anybody making any of these transactions in any of these roles until June of 2026. So I guess if there was some concern, I guess you could change it.
Could we just do this? It says designate two individuals at a minimum. Could we just have Todd and Tim be designated as the officers and representatives and managers for now and then make adjustments as we need to?
Tim, would that do?
Would that solve some of the problem? And then we're not having anyone who's not a direct employee of the city or the?
We can certainly, that and if it's an issue.
Is that okay?
And again, in your motion, I would approve the form and also authorize these individuals, Tim and Todd, to sign.
Okay.
That makes me feel better.
Does that sound good?
Okay. So let's do that then. So what I'm going to do is go back and restate this and then we can have a motion based on that. So tonight, what we are doing is ratifying and approving the form and what we are currently doing is designating Todd Meredith, Tim Logwood, as designated representatives for all the roles at this present time and can be adjusted as we need to.
And Calista Linkus is listed as an authorized representative as well as a city employee.
That's fine. And with that, we are authorizing Todd to be able to sign the form. Todd and Tim decide the forms as necessary. Is there a motion that we move forward with that?
To move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on that, just in case there's any concern, Melissa.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes. Okay. Looking at our West Radford Commerce Park, earlier in the evening, we held a public hearing regarding the match obligation. We've kind of explained all of that. We have three things we need to do this evening. We need to look at ordinance 1822, which authorizes the issuance and sale of a taxable general obligation note. We have to also look at approval of the note purchase agreement and then finally award a contract to the lowest bid for a transformer. So having done that, council, what, what is your pleasure? Do you have any questions?
I just want, for clarification purposes, once we exercise this right and we receive the money, we are going to create a separate account that this money will be placed in and that we will, there will be no other using this top rate, you know, the general fund or anything like that, correct?
Staff can do that. If council wants to make a motion instructing staff, if council wants to make a motion instructing staff to do that, you can do so.
We can include that in the motion, that this be put in a restricted account.
Yes. I would like that to be added to.
And, and by restricted, a separate checking account.
Yes. Thank you.
Separate checking account that is monitored and any kind of going in and out is brought to council and told us about. I'd like to know what is going on in all of our restricted accounts on a regular basis.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's do this one at a time. First of all, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 1822?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think, you know, we've got a representative, Davenport and company here that was here to go over like five different options, financing options that are available to the city. And I think there needs to be some clarity or some direction from city council as to which of these five options that, that will be approved on behalf of the city. I think that Mr. Sanderson would have some comments and a recommendation in that respect. And I think also that probably Todd has, has a preference on that as well.
Okay. Well, have the floor. That's fine.
I'll walk you through it. The ordinance in front of you authorize up to 750,000 borrowing. It also authorizes on page two, an interest rate not to exceed 7% and that that final designation to choose the, the interest rate is maybe delegated to the mayor and/or the city manager based off of the prepayment option that, that ultimately we select. So we got proposals back from JP Morgan in particular, September 10th. The interest rates ranged from, again, and this is a taxable loan, ranged from 5.53% to 6.13%. The lower the interest rate is a non-callable loan, so for five years. And the higher interest rate is because it can be called after 12 months with no penalty, partially or in full as well. So, and then there's ones all in between, two-year call, three-year call, four-year call. Given the, the use of the money and the potential to, to pay it off or even maybe not even needing to use all of the, all of the funds, our suggestion was to try to, to use the, the shorter call and give yourself some flexibility, either paying it off or even there was some discussion about maybe it may be able to be tax exempt in the future, we weren't sure about that. But to do the, the, the one-year call, again, at park, in part or in whole, at six point, actually, we had them update the rates today, 6.23% it would be today. The, again, it's with JP Morgan, the, your, your council has drafted the ordinance and the note purchase agreement. We would anticipate being able to close with your approval, obviously, by the end of the month.
With some of that flexibility on a callable bond, would there be any outs for us to be able to renegotiate if we continue to see the Fed lower the interest rate? Would there, is there any flexibility for us to do that?
No. And, and, you know, the, the reality is the, the Fed moving those short-term rates really doesn't impact these longer terms. We actually saw interest rates on the 10-year actually increase the other day when the Feds raised or lowered the, the Fed funds rate, but so it's not going to impact that.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that in mind, if we were to say, decide we wanted this callable after two years, we're, the only thing we're saving is that additional interest of the last three years of the loan than if we were to go for the non-callable at 5.53, correct? If we were going to pay it all off after the two years, we would save the last three years of interest?
You'd save the last three years of interest and the interest rate differential for the first two years would be, you know, a few, a couple thousand dollars a year, not, not very much. So in, in our mind, the cost of the, the higher interest rate on such a small amount really isn't that much on an annual basis, but the benefit really comes if you, if you have the ability to pay it off early, then you save the full interest for however long that, that may be.
And the order time on the transformer and equipment is going to be some time, correct? We're going to look at 18 to 24 months probably to be able to do that?
One year. I would, I would ask that council table the PO for the transformer. I'd like to review the proposals that came in with Tim.
Okay.
Like to have another week or two, put that on for the September.
But realistically, what I'm looking at is timelines. If it's going to take us 18 to 24 months to do all that, we couldn't pay the loan back in any less time than that anyway. So realistically, if, if it's a minimum of a 18 to 24 month, we'd be looking at the two, three, four, or five year, that the one year wouldn't even be an option, two year might not be an option.
You've got one delivery date on the transformer at 100.
Right.
The other one is 54.
Right.
You're looking at a year to two.
Right. So there's no way we could do this callable after one year. So we're just looking at the others, correct?
I'm not following you there, why you couldn't do it for a year.
If, well, if, well, I, I mean, I guess if the city had the money to pay it off, yes. But with this project and everything, if we need to use the money for this, we're not going to have the money to pay it off immediately. So that's the whole point that, you know, if it's going to take us 18 to 24 months to. if it's gonna take us 18 to 24 months to do the project, we likely would not have the cash to pay that off immediately, or else we would just pay it with cash.
That's, that's true, and maybe to make sure it's clear, the call is after 12 months or two years, whichever one you choose, and any time thereafter.
Right, no, I get that.
It's not like a one-time, okay.
I get that.
It's not a one-time call.
But, you know, there's, if we thought it was gonna be more like three years, it would make more sense to go for the lower interest rate and say, you know, that's when we likely would have to do it.
Mr. Mayor, something I would point out, you know, from talking to Kim Repass, he's been talking to the, you know, the grant provider, as I understand it relating to the substation, relating to the substation, is that the city gets, we'll call it the credit towards the local match.
Right.
On that grant, once it executes a purchase.
Right.
You know, for, you know, the substation, it doesn't have to actually be when we actually pay.
Right.
You know, so, you know, in essence, in terms of like the rehabilitation work that's being done out there currently, like the, you know, the concrete slab removal, once the purchase order is signed, you know, at that point, you would have credit towards the local match, much like we do now for the purchase price of the property.
And by tabling that, is that going to cause any issues? And Abram, I don't know, do you have any, time-wise, is that gonna cause some issue?
My own question for this is, I have some of the timing. I have quite some research into the last thing about that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. I think that Todd's thought was to table it to your retreat in just a week.
Okay, okay.
I think the timing is more of a...
Exactly, but not the, not the, not the transformer piece.
Right.
I think, I think, I think a decision does need to be made for purposes of the bond, but not the substation. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, so what we need to do is give some direction on whether we want this to be, you know, what year, what number of years we want, what amount of interest. Counsel, is there any direction that you have for us? Counsel, do you all have any preference on this?
I completely understand the pros and cons of a callable, non-callable. My thing is, is with our cash position, I don't know that we would be able to pay this back, so even though it is a little bit of a minimal thing, maybe leaning more towards the lower interest rate, but I do, I mean, I certainly could see the benefit of having that flexibility.
I would say go for three years. That gives us a little time, and then we could go from there. It's not the lowest interest rate, it's not the highest interest rate, it gives us three years. If we have to keep going, it's a few thousand dollars more, but it's not significant.
You saw, you said that it was 6.23% on the one-year callable. Do you have any updated figures on the callable three-year?
Yeah, the three, they all moved up by 10, 10 basis points, so the, the three-year as of this morning was a 5.76% versus a 5.66%.
Okay. But does three seem like a reasonable middle point for us?
I think so. So I think, having the ability, the flexibility to have a two-year call, a one- or two-year call, may be worth it. If the, if the transformer comes in in 18 to 24 months, it's on the site, and it sells quickly. Let's say the site sells, and I guess in theory, it could sell even before we have the substation on the site, but if it were to sell, you would have the flexibility to go ahead and pay it off early.
But I still think we need the flexibility. I think we need the flexibility of the longer term.
Could we just say, three years, that gives us sort of right down the middle of this thing, and then puts us in a position where we don't have to pay it back in the three years, but we're getting the slightly lower interest rate?
I would recommend two. If you're, if you're gonna go above one, I would recommend two. With the substation coming on, it just gives a little bit more flexibility to pay it off early, and if you can pay it off after two years, you're gonna save $44,250 times three plus the 22 at the end.
Sure.
And Jimmy, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I don't quite appreciate the ability, when you may sell or not, but I'm, in my mind, if it's gonna cost you $2,000 of interest each year to have one more year of callability, I think that call feature is probably worth more than that if it, again, because if you have to leave it outstanding for another year, and it's, or a partial year, that's an additional $44,000 you've gotta pay.
So we would issue this in, say, October 1st, so we would have that ability to do it in October 1st of 2027, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Was that what you all wanna do?
Yeah.
That's fine.
For that.
All right, so let's do this. Let's table the award of the contract. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 1822 with a callable on or after two years, authorizing the issuance and sale of a taxable general obligation note with the understanding that it be placed in a restricted separate account?
A moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And then, do we need to do any additional approval of the note purchase agreement? Is there a need for a motion for that?
It's part of the, it's part of the ordinance.
Okay, so we're good, then. All right, thank you, and then we'll take up the other next week at our retreat and review that and get that taken care of quickly. All right, counsel, one more piece of business. We do have a vacancy on the Recreation Commission with the passing of Sam Hubbard, so at this point, would we wanna say that we could advertise the vacancy for the Recreation Commission, and then take that up at a future meeting?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay, let's just do that, then. I don't think we need a motion or anything else beyond that. We have two appropriation ordinances, I'll read both of them, and we can just consider them both together. Appropriation ordinance 1815.10, and the amount of $17,650. That's for an alcohol grant for supporting selective enforcement efforts, and it helps improve our efforts such as Drive Sober, Get Pulled Over, Campaign, DUI Checkpoints, Additional Officer Coverage, and the purchase of three preliminary breath test units. We also have appropriation ordinance 1815.11 for police traffic services. They've received the grant from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles. This funding will support ongoing speeding enforcement, place additional officers on duty during peak times, and also allow purchase of equipment, including radar, portable speed bumps, LED road flare kit. Appropriation ordinance 1815.10 is $17,650. Appropriation ordinance 1815.11 is $22,800. Is there a motion that we approve?
A moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading. Is there a motion that we do so?
A moved.
We have a motion?
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Todd, what do you have for us this evening?
So appreciated getting out to see the local businesses located on the Main Street, on the east end of the city, on the east end of the city. Thank you, Jesse, for making the introduction and traversing the sidewalks with me that day. I really enjoyed it. We, we actually heard some pretty good ideas about how to improve the downtown, everything from location of trash cans to areas to put acrosswalks, so it was really good to hear from local business owners. No one knows the area like they do, they see it every day. Look forward to seeing more on the west end tomorrow. Jesse's gonna make that trip with me, so, so once again, thank you. Look forward to shaking hands and learning more about the west end of the city of Radford. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the, the project that's going on on the, at the west, western, West Commerce Park, excuse me, I can't talk. But that's a really exciting project, I'm, look forward to seeing that going forward. As I said before, I really think that's a generational project for the city. It's a great deal, it's a $3.5 million grant that's gonna get a lot of work accomplished on that site, and for the city to only put in $615,000 to get that, I think that's tremendous. And I appreciate working with Abram and the EDA on that project. I think it's, I think it's gonna have a huge impact on the future of the city, and thank you, Council, for, for everything that you all are doing to move that project forward. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Kelly, what do you have?
I had a joint commission meeting. I already spoke about the homeless things that we talked about. I wanted to make mention that the amphitheater was approved to continue doing detailed studies, and they're gonna, that's gonna include a deeper design and landscaping, and an RFP, so that's moving along. Census update, there are 7,837 students, slightly over what they had anticipated, 1,300 new freshmen on campus, and they're going to, they're working on liveening up basketball games, so they're gonna start adding alcohol at the games, and they're revamping their ovens, so they're gonna be having a little bit more robust food menu. They had a series last year, I'm not sure what it was called last year, but this year they came up with a really cool name called Radford Talks, and they actually are gonna be, so it's a, it's a series that's gonna be monthly, bi-monthly, something like that, where faculty speak on different aspects of what they're interested in, and so they were having them on campus, but this year they're gonna be having them in our community businesses. So the first one is September 24th, from 7:00 to 8:00, at Arabica Coffee, and it's gonna be evolution, learning to embrace the dynamic nature of our planet. If you wanted to do that, that's open to the public. Chamber is working on a directory, so that's gonna make it a little bit easier to put together what businesses are for visitors, they're in the beginning phases, but I think that's gonna be a really good program. And I think that's about all I have. I appreciate everybody that came out and, and spoke tonight. I know that it was a lot to take in, and I appreciate everybody that came to give us that presentation. It was a good presentation, and they, they definitely tried to answer all of our questions to the best of their knowledge, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the community members that came out and expressed their concerns as well. I think, I think that's about all I have right now.
Thank you. Jesse, what do you have?
Well, I wanna just expand a little bit on the conversation with Todd and I going out and meeting with the businesses. What I was so impressed with was the fact that all of the businesses were so very supportive and their love for the community. It was just, I think, so apparent, and it was nice for Todd to see and hear, and the suggestions, while they know that we're not in a position to perhaps move mountains, there are small things that we can do that they see every day, that sometimes we walk past or drive past. One other thing they mentioned was if they could just get a little bit of support with maintaining the sidewalks. They said we do a really good job when RU is getting ready to come back in session, but we, if we could just offer them a little more support. They all acknowledged that, you know, that what's in front of their, their building is their responsibility. A couple businesses said not everyone takes that to heart in quite the same way, so if we would offer them a little bit of assistance. So everything that they mentioned really was common sense based and doesn't move mountains.
What do they mean by assistance? What are they looking for?
So, there, there's grass that's growing up in the sidewalk, things of that, nothing, nothing huge.
Not coming down and sweeping the sidewalks with our street sweeper.
There, I mean, we all maintain the roads, you know, we have to maintain Main Street, but really, it's just helping them, if there's weeds, spray for weeds, that was the main thing. And just to remind everyone, you know, be a good steward, throw things into the trash cans. If you're walking and you see trash, please pick it up and throw it in the trash can. Actually, the mayor just was acknowledged for doing that when he thought no one was watching, so do more of that. So anyway, my point being, the, the response we had was amazing. I'm looking forward to getting on the west end tomorrow and hitting as many people as we can in the time that's available, so. I wanted to ask the chief, we were hearing a little bit of issue in our parking lot downtown. I, I don't know if that's something that you've seen, or something maybe you can keep an eye on and monitor?
I mean, I had an issue, but we'll keep...
Perfect. We did have the closing of the Field of Honor. I always hate to see those flags go down, because I think they're such a good reminder to us all, and, and they're just striking. But we did do the official closing. I wanna give special thanks, we had several businesses that stepped up and provided food, and we had McAdoo's, BT's, Jimmy John's, and Commonwealth Senior Living. By the way, they make amazing cookies. I did not know that, but they are amazing. I need to find out if they will do that for events, I'm not sure, but they were so good. I met with the fire chief briefly, we were talking about staffing and some options, because he's also well aware that we're not in a position to, to hire unless absolutely necessary, keeping safety in mind. I'm gonna be doing my ride-out after our next work session, so gave him my word on that. The other thing I wanted to bring up to counsel was, I've been doing a little bit more reading and talking to some of our folks in regards to the solar issue, and I know I was able to talk to a couple of you guys, and with you being here as well, it's helpful. I'm kind of feeling that these folks made a pretty large investment with the information we told them at the time, and I think they feel it's a little bit disingenuous for us now to change the wind in our sails in a way that's gonna negatively impact them. I did mention that, you know, there would, there'd probably need to be, no matter what, at least a monthly fee, because no matter, that we have to maintain that grid, no matter what's coming on it. So I would like us to reconsider maybe how we address the folks that currently are utilizing our solar, our plan that we put in place, or that we were acknowledging for so many years, and maybe grandfather them into a plan, and going forward, if we could adapt whatever the suggestion is, that would be, of course, Tim, to the, to the wisest, but I just feel a little bit remiss, after speaking to those solar users and hearing of their investment, that we are now kind of pulling the rug out from underneath them on it.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please do.
I guess my, I've been waiting for Todd and Tim to kind of bring something to us, 'cause in all the emails I've been reading, to me, it sounded like there's some either legal or contractual, or some kind of verbiage out there from the state or somebody that we haven't been applied correctly. But am I, you hear what I'm saying, Tim, or?
From my knowledge, the, all the state governments apply to the changes. To the larger IOUs, the FCOs and the...
The, what I read is that we were receiving and what he provided us was basically, that's what AEP and the larger entities, but because we are a smaller utility provider, we have a little bit more flexibility in how we address that.
I'd like to clarify something, some of these customers, they won't, they won't talk to us before they develop. Always, you know, if I have conversations with customers, I always have told them, these are such a, not advocating whether the city can grandfather somebody in or out, all of this is fair array for the city.
So, so was the change made to eat, to eat?
Probably for that to honor or the city.
Okay, I'm, yeah, 'cause I'm still lost. Why did we make a change to what we were doing then?
So, that change was made before I started with the city, but it's my understanding that the auditor caught that, and when they were looking...
You caught it in an audit or another...
Okay, it was in a rate study, okay, okay.
It was not, not called, I ordered, I called it.
Okay.
They weren't, they weren't being billed as...
Was a notification sent to them once we caught that?
It was.
Um...
I, I think, I have some discretion in that, but I understand.
Right.
Yep. Can I ask you a question about solar, because I've, I've been trying to read and decipher it and learning, it's like drinking from a fire hose a little bit, because I'm just not as familiar. So when... So when a home generates the solar energy and let's say that their home utilizes it, they have a bill typically right now of zero, let's say, but they have excess solar that goes to our grid. Do we, do, are we utilizing, is that a benefit to us when there's extra solar that they're putting into our grid? Do we carry that over or do we have to use it right at that time? How does that work?
Benefits us during that time, okay. During the nighttime, we're selling, there's a. It's not, it's not a benefit of full retail cost or credit.
When it's one, when it's one of those rainy or cloudy days, more than likely, their, their home is not generating the same amount of solar that if it's bright and sunny. So at that point, they probably would be pulling off the grid.
It ain't come a day where our costs fluctuate on an hourly basis. So are we going to link on an hourly basis the amount of power is, is, is.
Mm-hmm.
Complicated issues and then we have a right decision based on what our billing system can handle.
But right now, it's handling the way we have been doing it, okay, prior to the change. We didn't change it. We weren't having trouble filling out, deciphering how to bill them when they had excess solar or.
I think billing too, but there still has to do.
How many customers are we impacting?
Probably 26 residential or a few.
Okay. So, but at, at some point, them having solar and having excess, it does, there is a benefit to us.
What it costs for that energy, that code pays three cents, that's what it costs to their customer.
Mm-hmm. You need to, yeah, agreed.
And throughout, it's the best way.
And when you say that it's, it was, it come out during an audit, during an audit, does that come, come up? Or if you hadn't have discovered it, is that, and is that something we're dinged on? If we're using our own, you know, our, our own rate versus what AEP is? If it's coming up, is it coming up as an issue on an audit?
Hey, the, the charges only count, does not look correct.
Right. So it, it's not a perfect solar world, apparently, as we're finding out. But I just, I feel like the folks that have invested, that I, I still feel a certain responsibility to honor what we've been doing and not changing on them after they've made the investment. That's a, that's.
I don't want to.
But, but.
No, no, and I appreciate it. And we, we tax you with a different, a different goal. So I, I totally appreciate what you're doing and why you did it and I'm following your mindset. Totally 120% understand your perspective on it. Is there a way if we had, if we could grandfather them in, and this, this might be the bigger ask, if we had someone tomorrow that decided they were going to do solar, would we have the ability to bill them under a new policy? Different from the ones that we grandfather in?
We should have the ability to bill anybody.
Okay. Okay.
But, but what I think, I'm still trying to get this straight in my mind. What I think I just heard was we were not billing correctly. And we made an adjustment to start billing correctly.
That was my assessment.
So based on that, they have gotten a break for ever since.
They have, except for what I would say is they made these investments based on what we were doing at the time. And when we say that it was caught, it sounds to me like it's not that it's caught and we're doing something wrong. We have the ability to do it however we want, and that's what we've been doing.
I understand that part.
And I totally understand the need going forward. But, you know, when you've made this investment based on our policy and what we're doing, I feel, because they weren't told, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, they weren't told that we were billing them at that, that, or we, at that, right.
But they also didn't ask, correct?
Some of them asked.
Right.
Right, I mean, that's. Some of them have had this 10, 15 years. That's unfair to remember, ask them to remember.
The customer, you know, had two benefits. Cost of us. But others, you may have asked, and when I did the audit, you know, there was only two accounts that stood out to me that looked odd to me, so. I don't know if it impacted more than.
And maybe even a, a thing we could do is maybe not going back to what it was or what it is now, but where's the fine line? I think that's kind of where you brought in, maybe a $25 fee or, or whatever that is, like, hey.
I'd like a recommendation of what seems to be the most appropriate, most fair, and then we can debate it from there. Does that sound good? Because right now, it's a very hypothetical thing.
And the other thing, when we come up with, with an amount, I'm, I don't want it to be an arbitrary amount that we are, we're just kind of picking out of a hat and what sounds good. What I think we really should do is, you know, look at maybe, and this is just a suggestion, a 10-year period. Let's kind of ascertain what, what we think that we're going to need to do to that grid and to our electric company. Take that, what we, an estimated cost divided by the number of, of people we have.
I'm going to turn to our expert and say, based on all the things we've looked at, we're going to give you a recommendation, then you can debate it from there. How about that? Does that sound okay?
And for whatever we're, we're charging monthly, if we could qualify that in some way, that would be great. So we can at least explain why we're, what, yeah, yeah.
All right, you got anything else?
That is it for me.
Seth, what do you have?
Well, we've hung out for four and a half hours, so I'll, I'll make it very brief. I just wanted to say thank you to Todd. I know that a lot of things that aren't seen or go unnoticed, but I appreciate your attention to detail and digging into the, you've, you've found some, some things that, you know, we, we need to do better and we're going to do better moving forward. I think that as a city, we are trying to get our house back in order and you have been an asset in that process. And a lot of these things don't happen overnight, but your attention to detail has brought some very good things to us. And I know that there's a real sense of urgency from all of us to do some actionable items and, you know, to really, you know, get to where we want to be and move the needle in a meaningful way. Because our financial house is not where it needs to be, period. And I appreciate all your, your due diligence. I know that you have had a monsoon of, of things from all different directions, but you have caught some good things and brought it to our attention. So I just want to leave it at that and say I appreciate your attention to detail. So, thank you.
Guy, what do you have?
Well, I also want to thank all the people who were passionate about the zoning for coming out and, and giving their opinions. And, and we appreciate that so much. The only other thing is I want to make, take a moment to express my great respect and admiration for Charlie Kirk. He was murdered on 9/10/25 for his commitment to his God, his family, his country, and the pursuit of free speech and dialogue with those who disagreed with him. I pray for his wife Erica and his children and that Jesus will comfort them and guide them in the years to come.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say thank you again to everybody who participated in the meeting, all of the discussions that we had. Thank you to Todd and Mike and, and Tim and the staff. We're so appreciative of everybody who works so hard. Melissa, you are the glue that holds us together with so much and thank you for everything that you do as well. There's a lot of complicated issues that council's working on, that staff is working on, and we're trying to take care of things as best we can. There's a lot happening. I did go out with the chief on Friday night. Our police force does a great job. Really does a wonderful job keeping our city safe, encountering citizens, guests, all kinds of folks who are in the city for various reasons and just real proud of the work that they do. And I want to say thank you to our chief and our police force. Coming up on, on October the 11th is the Highlander's Festival. It coincides with Homecoming. I hope you all can come out. It'll be out on Moffett Field on Radford University's campus. That's going to be a big weekend for the city and a lot of opportunity for us to engage and have a great time, so. And we will say goodnight for now. We will meet you back, yep? Sorry to interrupt you. No, go ahead. If I missed this, I apologize. But on the ordinance approving the financing, the bond, do you all want to make a motion to waive a second reading? We did. We didn't?
No, you did not.
Okay, if I missed it, I apologize. It wasn't. I did on the others. Okay, is there a motion that we waive the second reading on the ordinance for the bond approval? We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. So I was going to say, we will meet back here at 6:00 PM next Tuesday, the 30th, for our council retreat and we will go forward from there. Otherwise, we are adjourned. Good night.